To order the February 23 meeting in the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallow.
Counselor Souza.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is absent.
At this point, it's my pledge to administer the oath of office to firefighter 4th Class, Gordon J. Simard. Gordon, could you please step up?
Madam President, before you start, could I just give you a few accolades of firefighter Simard? He's going to be a little embarrassed that I've done this, he's already told me he didn't want me to. He's here, he's joined here this evening by his wife April, his son Cole, his daughter Leah, his mom and his two sisters, as well as other family members. Gordon is assigned, he's also a National Guardsman, he's assigned to the 169th Military Police Company, where he has served in Afghanistan with distinction. During that time, he's received the following citations in Afghanistan: The Afghanistan Campaign Medal with Campaign Star, Army Achievement Award, his second award, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, Armed Forces Medal with Device, NATO Medal, the Combat Action Badge. He is also a member of the War and Fire Department, where he serves on the Narragansett. One of the things that really distinguished Gordon, who has worked for us now one year, he has completed his probationary period, and I'd like to read to you a letter of reference that was given to us by one of his military commanders. "In addition to his primary duty, Specialist Simard voluntarily assisted with Camp Sick calls when his primary mission allowed him to do so. During a significant attack, Specialist Simard was serving the same defensive position in which a fellow comrade was severely injured. Specialist Simard provided immediate care to that soldier and continued to aid soldiers at the casualty collection point. These actions earned him the Combat Actions Badge and a deeper respect from his peers. Throughout the deployment, Specialist Simard kept a positive attitude and stayed mission focused. We're very proud to have Gordon join us as part of the Tiverton Fire Department, and I am thrilled to be able to present him to you for promotion from probationary firefighter to firefighter 4th class."
You also feel that Tiverton should be very proud that you've chose to work for us. Repeat after me. I, Gordon J. Simard.
I, Gordon J. Simard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, enforce, and abide by the Constitution.
Will support, enforce, and abide by the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Rhode Island.
And of the State of Rhode Island.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provision of the Charter.
Observe the provision of the Charter.
And ordinances, ordinances of the town.
And ordinances of the town of Tiverton.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As firefighter 4th Class for the town of Tiverton.
As firefighter 4th Class for the town of Tiverton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice pitch, Sean.
Twin decks.
Madam President, there's also tradition is that firefighters, these firefighters as probationers do not receive their badge until they come off of probation, and I would, at this point, give it to Gordon's wife and Cole to, April, to pin the badge on to Gordon. Careful, it's up on the back.
I wanted to tell the baby.
Again, thank you very much for allowing us to do that.
Consent agenda. No one that's available received a minutes from the following boards and commissions: Conservation Commission, Library Trustees, Budget Committee, our council, Recreation Committee, Open Space Time 7. Correspondence received and filed the City of Warwick Resolution supporting House Bill 2015H 5044 regarding taxation of developmental properties. Approval of tax assessor abatements. Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department overtime for January 2015. Town Administrator, Department monthly reports for January 2015. DPW Director Response to Councilman's Request for Information on Land Full Closure Costs. Treasurer Denis Saret Distribution of Budget and Revenue Reports, January 2015. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I would. I'd like to remove CA-5, Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department overtime. And in relationship with that, CA-8, Treasurer Denis Saret Distribution of Budget and Revenue Reports, January 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Police and Fire Department overtime. Just give me one second. It's the Fire Department overtime I'd like to look at, and I don't want to beat a dead horse once again, but the January report is over 24,000, and if you look at the treasurer's report, we only have $9,000 left. So I, once again, I'm asking, what's our plan? Where are we getting the money? Because at this point, it's mid-budget, and we've already spent the entire allotment.
Well, fortunately, it's not six months in, it's less, but still, understood. Though, as you may recall, some time ago, I asked the Fire Department to freeze all spending on certain accounts, and we've been abiding by that to the best that we possibly can. My intention, for so long as this problem continues, that we would solve it from within the Fire Department's own budget, even if it means not buying small tools and other things that we would normally buy for operations. Because at some point, it has to hit home to everybody that this is an unsustainable pattern of spending.
Now.
The second part of this, I'd like to reserve for our conversation in executive session because it has come up in negotiations, and we've, we've asked, and the union is, at least keeping an open mind to addressing this, this problem during the existing contract and for part of the next one. So I've run those ideas by you when we have an opportunity to discuss them at length in executive session. However, the last part of this plan is going to go back through virtually every account we have and see where we have any potential overage as we close to the end of the year. The combination of this overtime account and the stress that the storms have placed, because you can be alarmed about this, but we're also at zero in our storm accounts.
Well, that's what concerns me, because as we all know, this budget was very, very tight.
It was very tight.
And we know what we've spent on the blizzard and the storms after. So we have spent in overtime, let's say we've spent the 280,000, and we have five months to go. I don't see, if this continues, how we're going to maintain this at all.
No.
And is the treasurer here? I would assume that this, what we spent in January reflects in, in your report. So, so your report said that we have, says we have $9,500 left in the overtime. That's minus, this is already subtracted from it. I'm looking at a two-week overtime report for January.
Payrolls in, some people are paid in arrears, some people are paid to date, so I don't know how this is broken out.
So we might already be in the revenue account.
Potentially. Is this for?
This was, this was for the entire month of January, because of the meeting schedule we had, you hadn't got it. So that was for the entire month of January. 12,000 of this is storm-related, which we have sought reimbursement from FEMA for that.
So some of this could actually end up being paid in February, which wouldn't be reflected in February.
So it could be in the vet already in this account. And what you said about the DPW, that, that was one of the things that concerned me, because I don't see where we're going to get $200,000 from this budget. I don't know if the rest of you agree with me, but...
I agree.
I know, I just don't see it, because as it was, this budget was so tight that we were afraid that we weren't going to pull it off. And that is why, obviously, the chief is asking for $460,000, which you didn't approve of, because that's why. I know.
We face the possibility the treasurer should have stayed the microphone. Because we sold Judson Street, and that, that's an unanticipated revenue. We'll just throw it in. So we face the possibility that we would have.
Is that true, Denise?
Unexpected revenues, that we don't apply directly. At the end of the year, we'll still balance out, but I've been asking you to explain the mechanics of that.
Typically, when we have revenue, it gets recorded as revenue and not as an offset to expenses. So at the end of the year, if we have unexpected revenue, our, it will offset any deficit that we could have on the expense side. So that your net number is closer to zero. However, you know, you can't take the money from the sale of Judson Street and spend it.
So at the end of the year?
At the end of the year, though.
Then we can spend what, if we're...
Well, you end up with a net, hopefully, zero, not a net deficit, by having additional unexpected revenue.
I just don't think it's right to, to, to throw it into this, because the council did not approve to spend over $400,000 in overtime this year, and I, I don't think it's fear to the town or the citizens to take any revenue that we get and put it into account, because it's overspending there.
You can't do that.
Basically, that's what we'll be doing, though. Technically, that's what we're going to be doing. Technically, that's what we're going to be doing.
Just a question before we move on. I know years past, like when the legislature cut aid to cities and towns, and we had to close Town Hall and stuff, I mean, is there wiggle room in other accounts where we could move money over just to cover what we have now? I mean, what other accounts would need, where else could we draw money, if we add to, what other part of the budget can we draw money from?
We're talking 200,000?
I know. I mean, are we maybe talking about, are we talking about cutting recreation? Are we talking about things like that? I mean, non-essential?
It's already, like I said, a lot of that's already spent. That's already spent.
Well, then the only other alternative is going forward, that we need to cut manpower. I mean, that's, there's only two choices. We either raise more money or we cut manpower. There's two choices.
I have asked for the run sheets, well, I have asked for the run sheets for all the fire departments, all the fire stations, over the last four months, and get an average of what, how often they're going out and go to that and look into that alternative. But if we see how often these fires, how often they're able to...
The problem with reading every two weeks and reading, you know, is that two weeks from now, what's the bill going to be?
Well, I'm hoping to have it by the budget, meaning that we have on Saturday, because this is part of the budget talk.
Is it on the agenda?
Oh, it doesn't have to be. Yeah, we can vote it out. We can vote it out.
And this is something I think needs to be, like, ASAP.
Well, it just concerns me, because we know there's going in the revenue account, and I don't see $200,000 in any account. Anybody else like to say anything? Dave was going to say something.
Well, I think it's something we have to look at also, and I agree with you on exactly what you said, and it's something we've got to take care of quickly. We can't let this continue to go on. We have to come up with some kind of plan real quick, real fast, to get this under control.
And that's why I asked for every meeting, we see the overtime, because I could see it, we could all see it going this way. It didn't take a rocket science.
We'll just have to make sure it's on the agenda for...
We'll talk at, we'll talk at the budget committee, because the budget meeting on Saturday.
Workshop.
Yeah, and it's a special meeting, right? Nancy, you don't have to advertise?
Yes.
So we do have to approve your final expense and revenue.
Yeah.
Thanks, Denise.
You're welcome.
On Saturday, we have to approve on, what's the date?
Well, if not Saturday, it would be the following.
Saturday is February 28, and we'd have to have it completed by the 4th.
Right, and we have a meeting the following Tuesday, another budget meeting, special meeting.
Oh, I don't have a budget meeting the following Tuesday.
It's on my calendar, because we wanted two more, and we wanted one right before May 4.
You have a special meeting on March, on Monday, March 2nd, but that is for the workshop on open meetings and training. So are you saying you also?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I don't have it in my calendar.
Yeah, I have March 3rd. I don't have that, so, and we don't have it locked, so if you're looking to plan one, we've got to get it locked.
Yeah, I wrote it, I don't know why, but I wrote March 3rd, because we have to get the budget in by March 4th. So that's why I thought, that's why we discussed that we needed two more.
Planning board meeting here, but I suppose you could be...
Right, it was talked about that, and we said we could go to the senior center.
That's March.
Remember that part, yeah.
That's March 24th, we interviewed, but that's fine, if you want one March 3rd.
I think we should just, we should advertise in case we need it.
Definitely.
In my opinion, we're nowhere, but we still have a lot of talking to do.
Okay, fine. I also want to make that the final long one as well, we'll just be...
I can't make Saturday.
I'd like to adjourn the motion to approve CA-5 and CA-8.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Public Presentation, Mary Sahidi, Hank Sahidi, and Co., and Company PC Presentation of Audit Report, 6/30/2014.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm assuming everyone has a...
You can take a seat if you're more comfortable.
Thank you.
I figured you wouldn't be here, yeah.
All the better. I assume everyone has their financial statement packages with them. So I'd like to start by thanking everyone for the opportunity to serve the town of Tiverton, to do their annual audit. And I'd also let all of you know that working with your staff here for the town of Tiverton was an enjoyable experience. Everyone here in Tiverton was very accommodating, got us all of the information we needed for purposes of the audit, was able to answer all of the questions that you had, or that we had, and hopefully, we were able to do the same to the employees of, of the town as well. I have with me tonight Kyle Connes, he was the manager on this engagement, so you can kind of see a face that goes with the staff that were here. So if any of you came in and out of the building, Kyle would have been here each and every day of the audit. So I'm going to start with your financial statements. I know you have a lot of interest in your financial numbers. Look at your financial statement. The town of Tiverton is really financially sound. I know you're having some issues based on the conversation we just heard with regard to your fiscal '15 budget, but for fiscal '14, you really turned back a sound financial position. Your budget and actual came back with a positive turnback, if you will, or surplus of a little bit over $200,000. That $200,000 came from a couple of locations. Some of it had to do with user fees being budgeted for a much more conservative amount than the amount that you received. But in addition, on the expenditure side, the one thing that was isolated in the sense of an expenditure that you had budgeted that you didn't incur was interest income. So part of the $210,000 worth of surplus that you had in fiscal 2014 came as a result of some debt that you had budgeted, that you had anticipated spending prior to June 30th that didn't come due until 2015. So you want to kind of keep that in mind. So the 210 was a little bit overstated, if you will, in the terms of what you're talking about this year on a go-forward basis as to the tight budget. So had that not been budgeted in 2014, you would not have seen the surplus that you did in fact see. What I'm looking at, just to kind of put you guys in a perspective, is page 60 of the financial statement document is the page that we talk about most when we talk about the financial stability of a community, because the budget and actual is the information that is most interesting, more often than not, to all of you, into the department heads, because that's really where you control your budget from year to year, and day to day, and month to month. You're really looking at the budget and actual. And that page 60 is a rolled-up document in the sense that each of the numbers with regard to the revenue and the expenditures is showed in a grossed-up presentation, so that you can see on one sheet of paper really where you ended the 2014 year. If you were to flip back a few pages, and you wanted to know the detail of any of those numbers on that particular page, you could flip back, I don't have the page memorized, but it's probably around page 70, and you can see the details. So you will see things that you were just talking about, like fire overtime, you'll see your snow removal, you'll see the actual expenditures in 2014 as they compared to the budget for 2014. So that information is always helpful for you. I know you have it in other formats, I'm sure, for purposes of doing your 2016 budget, but that information is presented in this document as well for your review. In addition to the general fund budget and actual, we also present for you the school department unrestricted budget and actual. So you're going to see that the school department this past year, they ended their year with a million-dollar surplus. That million-dollar surplus was primarily as a result of savings in the special education area, both in the contract services as well as the salaries. So their savings was primarily in special ed. The amount of money, so when you're looking at the due-to-do from accounts, the amount of money that you now owe the school department continues to grow, because you had appropriated last year $22 million for the school department. You only had to give them $21 million, because they had a surplus, because you're only transferring over money to equal their expenditures. So when you're looking at your cash balance, you want to remember that some of that cash is due to the school department. So that's just a kind of a reminder. You had two other enterprise funds. The land acquisition is an enterprise fund, as well as the cafeteria fund. Both of those funds do not have budgets, so neither one of those funds are shown in your document as a budget and actual, but the actual activity for those funds are shown. As you all know, the land acquisition fund is stagnant at the moment. It still has a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think 248 in it, as in monies that have accumulated in that fund that are left over as a result of the bonding in that fund. And so we're continuing to show that fund as a land acquisition fund in your document here, but it hasn't had any current-year activity. In terms of the financial statements themselves, for the most part, they will mirror what you're used to seeing. So if you were to compare them to your 2013 financial statements, and you're looking at these 2014 financial statements, the documents are somewhat similar. But there are a couple of differences. There was a new accounting pronouncement that came out in 2014 that required us to disclose something called deferred inflows and deferred outflows. For a town this size, there is not a significant difference between the prior presentation, which was deferred revenue, to the current presentation, which is deferred outflows and deferred inflows. But if you looked at the two documents and you were to compare your balance sheets, you'll notice that you have two additional lines on this balance sheet that you didn't have in 2013. The other big difference that's coming down the pike, you may have heard from it, I'm sure Matt has described it to you, Denise has described it to you, and it has to do with pension disclosures. So effective June 30, 2014, there are two new pension requirements that will require you to report in your financial statements, your pension liability in a different light. For 2014, the financial statements you have in front of you, it's primarily disclosure. So what you're seeing in this financial statement is additional pages, including in the middle section of the report, which is called Required Supplemental Information, and it's pretty much just disclosure. A lot of the disclosure that's going to be required is going to be required for a 10-year span of time. Where the new GASB, a generally accepted accounting standard is set forth, is that we're going to add to that each and every year. So you'll see one year this year, two years next year, and so on. When you look at this document, it seems a little bit confusing. Because your pension plans end on June 30th, GASB 67 came into play this year. In addition to GASB 67 coming into play, the old GASB 27 was still in play. So you'll see in the Required Supplemental Information, it looks like repetitive information, but it's really not. It's the disclosure on the old standard that's still in place, and disclosure on the new standard that came into place this year. In 2015, so at the end of this coming fiscal year, the 27 will drop off. So you will only have your no disclosures that will relate to GASB 67. With that said, however, GASB 68 is then going to come into play. Seems crazy. They really don't have a lot to do in the GASB except to create new standards. But what this new standard is going to do, which is really going to impact every municipality across the United States, is it's going to now require you to pick up your pension liability, and that pension liability will now go on your government-wide financial statements. So if you were to look in your management letter, when Kyle put your management letter together for you, we included some information for the future year. So you'll, you'll see in that management letter that we talk about what this liability is going to be. It's going to affect everyone. It's not just going to affect the town of Tiverton. It's going to be in the government-wide financial statements, so it's going to be in the first couple of pages of your financial statements. It will not affect your budget and actual. It will not affect your fund financial statements. But there will be a significant difference between those fund financial statements in terms of fund equity and the equity-wise or the government-wide equity. And we talk about that. When we look at the general fund, right now, your general fund has unrestricted fund balance, if you will, of about $2.4 million. It's about 10% of the town's operating budget, which really is a healthy reserve to have. And I know we have a lot of one-time costs, and here's a perfect example, all the snow and blizzard expenses. and blizzard expenses that we have. So going back to a little bit of the discussion, not that I was involved in it, but that you were all having just before I sat down here, has to do with the snow removal expenses this coming year. And, you know, if you're not going to get state of Rhode Island reimbursement, or you're not going to get FEMA reimbursement, there's a good possibility that the only place to get that excess money for snow removal is going to be out of your reserves. And so there is a possibility that, you know, not only the town of Tivonin, but, you know, all of the New England states that have incurred all of the snow removal costs this year that was not budgeted, will in fact might, you know, have to come from some kind of reserve if you can't make it up in your operating Any questions on the financial statements themselves?
I have a few. Page 67, it says the annual money rate of return of investment expense. Could you explain that to me? Sounds like a latch number.
Okay, so, these are the Gaspys that I was just talking about, and these are the disclosures that are required. So this is one of the new disclosures that's required under GASP 67. So this particular amount of money, this percentage here, this 15.3%, this is, you know, in essence, what it says, the annual money rated rate of return net of the investment expense. So your return last year, weighted return, was approximately 15%. I don't know whether that is reasonable or not reasonable. I'm not the actuary, so really, that's a question to the actuary. We're just reporting, we rely on that third party to give us that information. I agree, it seems high, but I don't know what your investments were, so I'm going to make the assumption that it was calculated correctly, and that for whatever reason, whatever your investments were last year, you had a 15% return, net of some expenses, of course.
The other question I had was on the, let's see if I can find it here now.
And that's one of the calculations that is now going to be required under 67 to show 10 years' worth. So you'll see a lot better information on that as we add a year each and every year.
The outflows and inflows you were talking about, I'll jump to page 85 just for, I mean, all the way from 80 through 85, there's something there. But the one I'm questioning, and it looks like they fall into three categories, either restricted, committed, or unsigned?
That's, well, that was in effect last year, but yes, that's the now disclosures required for fund balance.
Okay, so the 467, 309 is restricted.
That's correct.
And some type of fund?
That's correct.
Okay. And the 67 is 670,000 is committed, so we owe those bills out somewhere?
You have committed them. So the 467, 376,000 of it is the North Tivonin contamination award.
Okay.
And committed could be something as simple as an open purchase order. So you could have, if you looked at the general fund, that's exactly what's in the general fund's committed fund balance, is your open purchase orders.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? So you received two other documents from us this year. You received a single audit report, and you received a management letter. The single audit report is your report on your federal programs. So if you look in your document that's entitled "Single Audit Report," you will see on page five that over the course of, or during the course of fiscal year 2014, you received 1.364 of federal dollars. So $1,364,000 worth of federal dollars. The requirement is if you receive more than $500,000, you have to have a compliance audit. Of that compliance audit, if you receive more than $300,000 in any one given federal program, it's usually deemed to be an A-type program and required to be audited in terms of compliance with the rules and regulations to that program. For the town of Tivonin, the only program that met that requirement was special education. So the only program that was audited in terms of compliance for the single audit was the sped program at the school department. And I'm happy to report to you that there were no findings. So we will file, or we have already filed at this particular point, the reporting requirements with the federal government indicating that there were no findings for special education. And then the last document you would have received from us is a management letter. And that letter is really a letter from us to management in the town with regard to recommendations to either improve upon internal controls in some instances, or improve upon potential accounting disclosures in other instances, or simply housekeeping issues that, you know, we have found during the course of the audit to help improve upon just your daily reporting. And then the last items, or the last items that we normally include in this particular report, is future pronouncements that we try to keep you informed about, so that you know what new Gaspys are coming down the pike and when their implementation date is. So in this particular document, we have sat down with management in the town and have talked about some of the particular items that we're making recommendations on that would hopefully help improve your daily reporting of your accounting data, both to yourselves and to the school department, and to each other as department heads. And so if you've read through this document, you'll notice that the majority of the items in this document are all housekeeping kind of items, reconciling with the school department on a regular basis. We talked about some funds that have no activity and coming forward to, you know, you as a school committee, I mean, a city council, a town council, rather, and getting them cleaned up. On the school side, there were some that weren't even on the books, because they have an old system, so they were keeping some funds manually, some funds in their general ledger. So we're recommending that they're all under general ledger control. Here, we talked a little bit about some of the deposits held accounts. They're now, they're in the general fund. They're probably more appropriately to be recorded in an agency fund, none of which is a problem with what's happening here, more housekeeping, helping you improve upon the systems to put the data in that kind of white bucket, if you will, to make the reporting easier when you're reporting both to yourselves as counselors, and to the state of Rhode Island, of course, and then certainly to the federal government. So it just helps in the long run. And then, of course, the two future Gaspys that we talk about in here is the GASP 68 that I mentioned briefly initially, which is your pension. And we talk in here specifically about what that liability is going to be to you, because your actuary has already recorded it. So we're really looking at about a $13 million liability that will show up on your financial statements next year that you don't currently have on your financial statements. And then with regard to the single audit, again, nothing that will affect you directly, but the thresholds are changing to 750,000. So right now, again, you are at 1.3 million in 2014, assuming you're going to lose none of that federal money. If faculty are moving the threshold from 500 to 750, it really has no effect. But it's at least interesting to you, because if you do have a reduction in federal money, when you're looking at what your requirements are, it's good to know.
I just have one more question on the single audit. Page seven says the results of our audit are as follows. Type of report issued on financial statement. Internal control of financial reports unmodified. Can you just explain what the unmodified and the no means?
So the no's, under material weaknesses identified, so there were none, significant deficiencies, none, and noncompliance with financial statements, none. Unmodified is another new term that you probably are not used to, because it was always referred to as a clean report. Now the language is unmodified. And so when we're reporting this, this summary of audit results needs to be consistent from every community, because this is what gets filed with the federal government. So this format, in terms of what the results of your financial audit were, and what the results of the audit over federal awards were, is identical depending on whatever municipality you're looking at. So basically, it means everything was clean. So modified would be, you know, if your report was modified, would mean that you have something in your financial report that's not consistent with the standards. Unmodified means everything that you have is consistent with the standards.
Good. Do you have a list of improvements from us? I know you just mentioned a couple.
I did.
Things that you should be looking at?
So in the management letter itself, and I didn't want to go over all of the details, because I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but in the management letter itself, we talk about various improvements that could be made into the accounting system, most of which, again, are strictly housekeeping kinds of recommendations that we have to help improve the system. So, you know, for an example, unrecorded funds, making sure those funds, they're not on the general ledger, making sure they get on the general ledger. We talk about the deposits held, they're now in the general fund. They really should be in an agency fund, because those monies do not belong to your general fund, and so you don't want to co-mingle those funds. So let's put them in an agency fund. We talked about in here, construction expenses. What happened here in the ledger is Denise, when she recorded your construction expenses, she recorded them as if they were part of GASP 34 and part of the entity-wide financial statements. Not long by far, because they are a capital asset, and they will be depreciated. But on the flip side of that, if you're going to track for fund accounting what you really spent on a project in a given year, then you want to see what those expenditures are. If they're on the balance sheet, they're now co-mingled with the prior expenditures in you as a council. So our recommendation is keep them in the expenditures for the current year, and then capitalize them at the end of the year. So all keeping housekeeping kind of recommendations, nothing that I would say to you, you know, like, we found this, and you really need to fix this. You know, reconciling with the school department on a regular basis is always helpful.
I didn't receive a copy of that. I don't know if anyone else did or not.
I don't know that I received a copy.
Could we get copies of that?
Sure, sure.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any stickies, thank you.
Thank you for being here, by the way, and I apologize for my tardiness to the rest of the council. My questions relate mostly to the pension numbers, and I, there are a couple of notations made that I want to understand a little bit better, and you may not be able to explain them all to me, because they seem like the policies of the town that I'm not aware of. But on page 38, in the credit risk, it's note number four to the statement, the last paragraph, it talks about the town's investment policy. I presume this is just a policy for investing general fund and special allocated fund balances. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
This is the first time, and I'm sure it's been in other, it just, I didn't know we had a policy like that. Is that something that each municipality typically crafts on their own, or are there some standards for industry?
It's definitely what each municipality crafts on their own, so they're able to write their own investment policy. You definitely need to follow the prudent man rule. And so when we're talking about a municipality investing in certain investment vehicles, if you will, there are standards that need to be followed, that, you know, you can't just go off and, I don't know, invest in, I really don't know what the exceptions would be, but, you know, there are certainly prudent man rules that need to be followed.
Fund balance, maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So there are rules, but you can craft your own or write your own investment policy.
All right. And you make no opinion one way or the other on that, the merits of that policy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The next question I have has to do with some of the actuarial assumptions. Now, I presume, I'm sorry, I'm on page 46 at the bottom. I presume this is, this methodology is sort of dog-eared for the municipal pension or unfunded liability calculations. Is that correct?
That is correct. And these assumptions are generally done primarily together with the town and the actuary.
Do we have an actuary for our general, or does he just do the police pension? So we rely on the state's analysis, presumably?
And that is currently two and a half years old, it looks like. Valuation date of July 1st, 2012. So they do it on a...
Two-year.
They do it every two years?
Two-year rotation, that's correct.
So we will have a new one next year that would have occurred just after the end of our fiscal year.
That's correct. Now, the police is a different story.
Yes.
Because the police is your own.
Right, we do our own. Okay. And you make no opinions to the validity of their assumptions or the appropriateness of their assumptions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, page, number 50.
I'm sure 5% is not convincing for healthcare.
There are a lot of things that are not convincing. Again, we have eight, page 50. Now, this looks like a more detailed actuarial assumption chart or table for the MERS system, and it breaks down the assumptions on salary increases and investment rates of return and all, where these amortization periods are. And I assume that is also from the state, because we probably would not have assumed a 14.5% salary increase for police and fire employees on our own, right?
That's correct.
And that is also a state number that they're, looks like they do every two years in staggered years, so that would happen this year, June.
13.
It says June 2011 and 2013. It looks like they do, I don't know what they do. Let me see. Your 2014 contribution is part of the actual valuation performed as of June 30th, 2011. The most recent valuation of the plan was done on June 30th, 2013, so they're...
Two years.
Two-year cycle.
For a bit more.
Yeah. Yeah. But they're two years in a year, is it, based on the valuation? Yeah, that's alarming, too. The last one is page 54. The thing I underlined was under note number 11, second-hand investments, the last sentence, the following was the board's adopted asset allocation policy as of June 30th, 2014. Is that something that, that presumably comes from the recommendations from our investment advisor, primarily?
Correct.
Okay. And we adopt them as our own, which is logical, right? And this is just an anecdotal comment. I wrote excellent with an exclamation point after having 0% allocation of cash, because we used to have about 10 or 12% of cash, and that made me crazy. And that's it. I like the notes, because that's where all the fun stuff is, but nothing jumped out at me, except for those things, which I will follow up on offline with the administrator.
Well, I am happy and impressed, because most often, the notes are not read.
That's what this stuff is. I read financial statements on a daily basis. That's where this stuff is. I read, uh, financial statements on a daily basis and that's where all the fun stuff and...
Exactly.
Usually the dangerous stuff is located.
You are correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anything else from the council?
Thank you. Any of you at any point during the course of the year have any questions? You know, we're certainly available to answer them, myself or Kyle. Um, you can either, you know, contact us through, um, your management or, you know, contact us directly if you have a particular question. Thank you.
Dave, you had asked about that fifteen point three percent for the pension fund. And I, we can talk about it a little bit more later. That is unlikely, an annual, an annualized return. It's typically what they do is they, they, it's an internal rate of return that would be stretched out and amortized back. And so it's kind of, it shouldn't, am I right in this? It shouldn't be our, it shouldn't be the actual one-year return.
It's too high.
It's very too high.
I've got a copy of the actuarial report for you to take with you from August twentieth of this year. And this is not my field of expertise. I can follow the numbers. What I think I'm looking at is a comparison. The market value of assets in January first, two thousand and thirteen, at seven point four six five million to January first, two thousand and fourteen, eight point eight four eight million. But be aware that that includes the town's contribution during the year.
Right.
So that's not the rest of the money in the market and came back with fifteen point three percent.
Right. But the difference between the two...
The assets group.
Is fifteen point two. It would be the fifteen point three.
And just my memory from that meeting is, it was pretty much half and half. The growth in the assets was pretty much half. The year, the year growth was about half of what we put in as income and the rest was returning from our investments, the interest and other things.
Yeah, that makes sense. Because we put in about eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand with all contributions.
Correct.
The pension pays out just under seven hundred thousand a year.
Right.
And, you know, we're growing. If we're even ten percent, that's another seven and a half.
The market did perform well and the asset allocation seemed to take advantage of that. So it was a good year.
Yep. But what I was just saying is what a money-weighted return is typically is they take all the long-term investments, run them out to their extension, assume some discount rate to come back. So it's probably close to fifteen, but it's probably not right at fifteen. Thanks. Either way, it's good news. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Advertised public hearing, alcohol beverages to town ordinance. Chapter six proposed, excuse me, proposed amendment to authorize regulation, a new BYOB license to serve alcohol brought in by patrons, also known as BYOB. Proposed amendment, additional proposed amendment. Andy, would you like to start?
This was originally, um, brought up at the request of the chief of police, um, who was concerned because there is a gray area. Um, the state of Rhode Island doesn't license from your own beverage establishments. They don't prohibit it, they don't permit it, they just don't really regulate it. Um, and consequently, most of the town, all the town's liquor laws are based on the state laws. So we have that same gray area. And there is a concern that if establishment were denied a liquor license, they might try to slip in under this loophole. So, um, we also, I think it's brought over the idea that would help businesses, restaurant businesses, be able to do it. Um, and so we put in, uh, the first part of the amendment, which was originally before you, was to deal with victualling licensed establishments, essentially restaurants that want to provide for BYOB. And we've essentially mirrored the state law as to the requirements. We'd actually even added in section six point one, is just a general power that applies to everything that wasn't in our ordinance. And looking at it, it was, we kind of jumped right into regulating it without having an introductory paragraph. So we added that. And then we added the language for, um, mirroring, mirroring the state legislation. Um, and the idea is that there would be people responsible, um, make sure there are tips-strained people. There, even if people are bringing in their own alcohol, sometimes even more so if they're bringing their own, you want to make sure that you're not having people getting drunk there. Um, and then going out and driving. So, uh, we put that. The second part, um, was added further after the initial review of that with concerns that we have, um, also have certain, um, events, nonprofit events, um, where BYOB is also allowed. Bring your own food, bring your own beverage. Again, it's not necessarily permitted at the moment, um, but we, so we wanted to permit it. Um, and there's a much less requirement there, less stringent requirement than the victualling houses, which are making their money as restaurants, encouraging people all the time to bring their bottles and drink. This is the sort of thing where we've made it. What we did was create a BYOB license for public entertainment in it. So if you've got something where it's public entertainment and you want to be providing, um, you could also have this. So if you've got some musical event or something and you're encouraging people to bring a picnic, they can also bring a bottle of wine with them as well, or bring some bottles of beer with them as well. But still, we want to make sure that there's somebody there who's responsible. We want to make sure there's at least one person there who's tip-strained and who's the responsible party to make sure that the drinking doesn't get out of hand. Um, so that's what the second part of the additions to this ordinance are.
At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there any comments from the audience?
I didn't sign up, is that matter?
No, but I'm just...
Okay.
Hi, I'm...
Good evening. Uh, my name's Ross Smith. I'm a, I'm a resident at Sandy Woods Farm, which is a privately developed in Tibetan. Uh, the family's moved in in two thousand and ten. And, um, I also serve as the program coordinator at Sandy Woods. And, um, I think as many people in town know, part of the mission of Sandy Woods was to create affordable housing for low and moderate income families. We have fifty rental units, um, at Sandy Woods. Uh, and we also have a mission of providing arts and cultural and agricultural opportunities to families living at Sandy Woods and to the general public, which we pretty much define as everybody out there. Certainly Tiberian Little Compton, southeastern Massachusetts. So in the last few years, we've, um, been pretty busy trying to fulfill that mission. Um, in the agricultural arena, we have a community garden that people can join. We have, um, a summer camp, which is a collaboration with the Newport County Y. Uh, the Tiberian Library, where we all eagerly await the new library to open in May. For the last two years, we've donated, um, space, meaning in what we call our flagship building, which is the Sandy Woods Center for the Arts or the SCOT. Um, I'm pleased to report that the Tiberian Library is there tonight putting on a program on harvesting wild mushrooms. And there's eighty people in there. I guess, I guess it's a trendy topic. Um, and then another piece of the puzzle is, um, uh, classes and workshops, zumba, pilates, yoga, all go on there every day. And then in the music arena, and this is where the BYOB comes into play, um, we felt that with the acoustics in the hall being so incredibly wonderful, um, that it made sense to provide live music. So we try to provide affordable live music to Tibetanians, to people from all over who find us, um, quality music, local, national, and international acts with a low ticket price point. And to further make it affordable, um, people are invited to bring in their own food and drink. Adult beverages, non-adult beverages, some people bring snacks and PB and J sandwiches, some people bring big platters of sushi, uh, some will sip wine or drink their beer of choice and others won't. Um, but that's how we've handled the, um, not only the concerts, but we have an open mic night, we give every Tuesday from seven to ten, local performers come in. Um, Gary Fish, a local singer-songwriter, hosts the open mic. And there are two people that are allowed to, um, we allow people to bring in, um, beer or wine if they wish. Um, so we've been doing that, April thirteenth, two thousand and twelve was our very first, um, concert. Uh, we of course applied and received the indoor entertainment license from the town, uh, which we've renewed every year since then. Um, hundreds of ticketed events with BYOB because we do live music every Friday and Saturday. So you're talking over a hundred shows a year. And if you add in the open mic once a week, a hundred fifty ticketed events where people are invited to bring beer and wine. I'm pleased to say we've never had a problem. Um, I'm at every event and I do watch, obviously, for excess consumption. Uh, I can't say enough good things about the tips program. I was a trained server. Uh, I was a professional waiter from two thousand to two thousand and four, and tips made a world of difference. It allows you to really spot problems before they become huge problems. Um, the other thing about Sandy Woods, we can't really take credit for the fact that there's never been a problem because, uh, it's a very respectful, what we call a listening audience. They are there for the music, sipping wine or beer is an afterthought, but they're not there. It's about as far removed as from a nightclub scene as you can imagine. Um, so no need for police to be present, no impaired driving, uh, no fights, no excess consumption, no underage drinking. Um, so we, you know, proud of the track record. At the same time, I think it's absolutely right that this is a gray area and it's, doesn't make much sense to me, um, that there shouldn't be some kind of parameters in place. Um, so as far as the ordinance itself is concerned, um, I guess I looked at the early draft, which was probably mostly Article Four. And, um, and of course, what we realized was, well, we're not a victualist license. We don't have a victualist license. Uh, we don't have a liquor license. We don't want a liquor license. We will never ask you for a liquor license. It's not our thing. Um, many nonprofit music venues do what we do, which is simply allow folks to bring in a picnic basket and, um, beverage, whether it's adult or otherwise. Um, and then of course, we saw the amendment. And, um, I guess in a nutshell, um, speaking for myself and as the program coordinator for Sandy Woods, I think it's a great ordinance. I really do. I think it makes sense. Um, it's kind of what we already do, but I think it'd be a wonderful idea to get tips certified again, uh, and get refreshed on that. Um, my only question on Article Five is, if you look at Article Four, you've got a restaurant that wants to allow BYOB, so they apply for a license. I assume it's an annual license. And now they can allow BYOB as long as problems don't arise and the town consents. Article Five is seen, seems like it's mostly standalone entertainment events. Um, so for example, um, last year we held a Pete Seeger Memorial Concert in our hayfields, um, because of Pete Seeger's connection with Tibetan. It felt like the right thing to do. Uh, we've also had an outdoor Shakespeare play where we allowed picnic baskets and wine. On both occasions, I came here and got the one-day special event license, um, and had it approved by the town. If this were in place, I would, it would make sense that I would, I should say Sandy Woods, would apply for a BYOB license to go along with that outdoor license. Um, but we also have this indoor entertainment license, which allows for the live music on Friday and Saturday year-round. And at every one of those events, we, we have, um, invited people to bring beer or wine in with them. So, um, it would probably be really difficult for us to request a license for each and every separate event. I'm hoping that maybe the way this might work is when we apply for our annual indoor license, we would also apply for an annual BYOB license. And we would be the holder of an entertainment license for indoor concerts and have a BYOB that goes with that. Um, because, you know, with the, we're doing so much at Sandy Woods. Um, hopefully, you know, we like to think it's high quality and that it's making a positive difference in the town. Um, but, um, with the number of ticketed events where BYOB has been allowed, hopefully we can just do one license a year. That was my only, and I know that a fee hasn't been determined, but hopefully it's not a huge fee. We're, we're a nonprofit, um, I should have mentioned that earlier. Sandy Woods Farm Inc. is a five oh one C three. Um, people know us as Sandy Woods Center for the Arts, but that's really almost like a DBA. That's just the place. It's Sandy Woods Farm Inc. And of course, as you all know, it's a five oh one C three charitable entity licensed, um, or certified rather by the IRS. And like most nonprofits, most of these events are break-even propositions at best. We either operate in the red or just barely in the black. So, um, hopefully the fee won't be too prohibitive and if it can be a one-time annual fee. At least when it comes to our indoor entertainment, that would be wonderful.
Andy, I don't think that, um, an establishment like Sandy Woods would only have to apply for that BYOB. Would there be a way, so we could work that in because he's right, he can't?
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good point and that's, and that's why we have public hearings and so forth. And I think, um, I think it would be good, there are some differences, um, because the, the regular license is for indoor events. So they're still required to get a separate license for the outdoor one. So I think we'd kind of track this the same way. That if you've got the indoor events, you could just get one license for the whole year of the indoor events. And then when you, if you're having an outdoor event, it would go along with it. Because it's meant to apply both to people who, I mean, they've got a kind of unique situation where they, every week type thing. Um, this is also meant to apply like...
One-time.
Pardon Ray, this thing with the fundraising days or, um, you know, other one-time events that's kind of more geared toward. But I think we could draft it so it could be both. Um, although I think it'd be two separate licenses, one that went along with the indoor, that would be an annual, and the other one for the event. I just have...
He would have to apply for an outdoor license anyway. So at that time, get a BYOB.
Well, that was our thinking that, um, you'll be seeing me soon because we're hoping to have an outdoor folk festival Memorial Day weekend and we need to apply for that. And certainly if we wanted BYOB there, um, my thought is we would apply for a BYOB license for that one-day event, or weekend event, I should say. And then a separate perhaps license for these concerts. But, um, that was really our only question in reading the ordinance.
I mean, I, I can't come up with that language tonight, but I certainly can come up with it for you by the next meeting. I just want to say one thing though, I just want to note, um, and if you're selling alcohol, like at the events or something, or if you're charging a fee for the events, that's when you'd also need that special one-day class, the F, class F one license for the liquor sales if you're having that outdoor event and you're charging for it separately.
Never sell?
Yeah.
It's very good.
Never. I honestly can't imagine ever doing it.
But, okay. But I'm just, I just point that out so that people realize that, that there's still a distinction.
Yeah, there's no corkage fee. It's really not, um, similar to the restaurant situation. People just bring in what they'd like to have during the show, during the music, and they're...
But I, I guess what I'm, and it doesn't bother you, but I'm saying, but people, I just want to make sure that people in general understand if they're serving alcohol, they're charging admission for an event, even if they're not charging for the drink, if they're serving alcohol, anybody serving alcohol is going to need a liquor license for that. If they get a caterer, then the caterer will have a license. But if not, they've got to have a license for that, as opposed to the BYOB.
Right. Like, yeah. Because that would not be a BYOB situation.
Yeah, I think that's how, yeah, that's how it's, it's been explained to us to, um, I think one way to put it is free as a price. You know, some people think if we're not charging, then we're fine, but free as a price. If it's free beer that you are providing, you're selling beer for nothing, which we don't do and don't want to do.
The question I had was, is it not possible to incorporate it as just sort of in one form? Say it's, it's an entertainment license and also at the bottom, you know, or in a separate section? Because these two can't be decoupled. If you want, well, they can one way, but the other way they couldn't. You couldn't have the BYOB license without the entertainment license. So if you're applying for the entertainment license, then it's as easy as checking, yes, I also want the BYOB license and here's my twenty-five dollars and my certification. And it all goes into one as opposed to having two separate applications and two separate, you know what I mean?
That'd be a question for Nancy, yeah. So...
You couldn't get it any, you couldn't get it without. So if you want the BYOB license as, uh, the situation is, you have to also have the entertainment license. There's just, there's no, there's no way around it.
Well, if you have a B, right. You could have a separate entertainment license.
Right. And if you don't want the BYOB, you just said, no, I don't want the BYOB.
You wouldn't want a BYOB.
I mean, it seems like it would be an easy enough...
I'm sure we can modify the license, just put a line...
I'm sure we can modify the license, just put a line in there and they can check them both off if they need to be BYOB or not.
It would just save a little bit of paperwork and a little bit of energy and no confusion.
Chief.
Mr. Smith? Do you want to be responsible for this, the license? I mean, it has to have a value or someone has to be in charge of this license for future events. If Mr. Smith or someone, let's just say there is a problem down there and we have to go down there and something, something happens, could another person now who say they represent Sandy Woods and they're going to get a license and just kind of put this, this next license as well as particular person who's in charge of Sandy Woods? Or is it just a collection of different residents?
I understand the question.
Can anyone who lives in Sandy Woods come in and get his licenses individually? Or is it just more representative of the organization?
No, please, Steve.
That's how I just wanted to make it that way.
You do have a title right, Russ.
Yeah, I'm the program coordinator, but to answer your question, Chief, Sandy Woods Farm Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We have a five-member board of directors. So I would think it'd be a question for the town attorney, I suppose, but I suspect only a majority of the board could apply for licenses in the name of Sandy Woods.
So individual residents can't come in and get a separate BYOB license?
Yeah, now we get it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll say it.
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Well, first of all, I was surprised that you said that you felt that you could accommodate the TIPS regulations, but are you the only one there that's TIPS certified? Or are there all the members of staff that work there that are?
Yeah, I'm not TIPS certified at present. I just mentioned in the past, I've been certified.
I just seen under, if this passes, then you'll be required to do exactly the same thing as restaurants do. I believe you'd have to have a number of people. If you have somebody there serving, eating food.
I wouldn't serve them.
I'm not saying, I'm saying even the people that are serving food to the tables where people are drinking.
That's, that does.
Well, that was my other question and I guess it's a good question because I read Article 4 and I read Article 5. And if I'm right, the biggest difference is that if you're the holder of a public entertainment license and you're falling under Article 5, you want to have someone on site who's TIPS certified, has learned to watch for problem areas before they become big problems. But in Article 4, in the restaurant context, the person comes in with his or her bottle of wine, puts it on the table, and from that point on, it's off limits to the patron and the waiter or waitress is taking custody of it, pouring it. And that, if I'm reading this right, that applies to the restaurant scenario, but not to a public entertainment situation. We'd have no reason to be visiting the tables because we're not sorting anything.
If I couldn't, let me just finish because I had, that was one of my questions on what we'd be required for the TIPS, you know, employees. But the second was on the corking fee. And I thought I understood that the legislature wanted people to be able to go to a restaurant, buy a bottle of wine and leave with it. But an employee of the restaurant had to cork it, I think, and put it in a plastic bag. So how do we deal with that with an organization like him?
It's different.
His, his- Okay. Well, first of all, the, the idea about taking it home, if you buy it, if you run a restaurant and, you know, you pay the restaurant $25 for a $12 bottle of wine and you only drink half of it, you get to take the rest of it home with you. And yeah, as they, the name for that I learned is the Merlot-to-go statute. That's what they call that statute. That applies only to people who are selling the alcohol.
Okay.
So I don't think that's going to really apply to any of this at all. I mean, if someone comes to a Sandy Woods concert and they're just pouring their own wine and they want to take the wine to go, they can take it with them. To be legal, they've got to have it locked in their trunk. They can't have it in the car with them anywhere. They've got an open container problem. So that's a separate issue. And I, I thought it was overreaching to try to deal with it in this statute. The same thing as far as the BYOB, and they're doing it now. We're, yeah, we're not looking to try to do it. There is a difference as to the TIPS training. Yeah, the BYOB people are serving food. They're making money selling you food. If someone coming to your table with the food, yes. Those people should all be TIPS trained. On the Article 5 one, I'm only looking for one person at the event who's trained, the person who's in charge of responsible problem, which kind of related to the other question of who's there. So that if there is a problem, we know who to go to and can deal with it in the future and so forth. But there's no reason that everybody has to be there because there aren't people providing any of these services. Musicians up on the stage shouldn't have to have the training and whatnot. The other people just coming in, sitting down. It'd be different if they were, again, selling food. If Sandy Woods got, if Sandy Woods got a victualing license and started selling food, then that would change it. But without that, it wouldn't.
So there's, so there's two standards basically for say a restaurant wants to have an, an organization like his where it's a-
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure he was clear on that.
That's what, that's what I've tried to-
It makes sense then, okay.
No, and if there's a, you know, God forbid, we haven't had a problem in two and a half years, if there ever was one, I would be the person, I'm at every event and I'm the coordinator.
He's always every single-
I'm the point person.
No, I just want to, I just don't want you running into complications. It's just, you know, ordinance is only as good as it's well thought out, so.
We operate with a very smart, if you, if you come to a show, it's, it's me and my girlfriend, Joan. That's pretty much it. She collects money at the door and I keep an eye on things and it works out okay so far.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Russ. Any other comment from the audience? Yes, Roger?
Yes, Roger Dennis. I had a question regarding Mr. Teix's comment on the Merlot-to-go, that the bottle has to be locked up in the trunk.
That's correct.
I have a station wagon.
Then you may have a problem. And some people have a pickup truck.
Chief has it.
You can't be within reach.
Out of reach, you can't, all your operating mobiles, you can't have access to it.
So, so give it to me.
Out of reach.
Not a reach. Not because he has an excellent description. Thank you. Clarify some of that.
Any other comment?
No.
Sit down, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Peter, I'm on 83rd Captain Circle. I looked over this law several times. Every time I went over it, I pick up something else. Just to be, not to be nitty-gritty about this, I see a few type of errors where it's a couple of words put together, each by cleaning that up. And I believe the state level or somebody in another town might be working on the BYOB situation too, but that's something else. I'd just like to get some clarifications on, it's like two parts, this law. One's for a retailer that sells food, correct? And then public entertainment. I think there might be, might need three subjects or topics or divisions. For the first part, you have to serve food before you could, is it a requirement that this establishment serves food for the first part?
Yes, yes. They have to have a victualing license and serve food, yes.
And so you can open the bottle up till you can serve food and then the waiter or the waitress will serve that bottle to you?
No, no, I mean, it's like, it's like a regular liquor license that we, I think it's a state requirement that you must serve food if you're serving alcohol at the same time. It doesn't necessarily mean you can't have a drink before you have a burger. It doesn't get that-
Yeah, you can sit down-
It doesn't get that.
The food part is just the licensing part that it applies. You've got to have, in order to get this kind of license, you've got to be-
Unless that, you don't have to order food in if you don't want to.
No, it's just like a regular restaurant. You could, you could go in and not order food and get a drink. You wouldn't be in violation of the liquor license.
You're a big young booze now.
No, you're right. You couldn't do that. You couldn't come in and just sit down and drink your bottle of wine.
Well, they kick you out because you've got to buy something.
It's not a very good business, that's for sure. Right. You have to have food with it, but you don't have to necessarily have the food beforehand. And I suppose if somebody came in, sat down, had their wine, and then left before the food got served.
But I think you said you can't be waiting for a table to, you can't-
That's what it says in here.
We did say, right. We don't want you sitting, we want you sitting down, right. We don't want, we don't want you out on, at the parking lot or the porch, drinking your beers while you're waiting to go in. We want people sitting down at a table. We're trying to, we're just, we're trying not to create self-service bars. We just want to provide this for restaurants, the idea that you have, you know, something you can bring your own alcohol to drink with your meal. And that would obviously, yes, could be while you're waiting for your appetizer, but we want you sitting down at the table. Again, that goes to the control because then you've got the waitress or waiter who's there who can sees what you're, can see what you're doing, and if there's a problem, they can take action.
And they got to serve the booze the first time at least, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. No. I can read it that way.
They got to open it up to cook.
I can read it that way.
Um, no, I don't think they do. I, uh, let me just see what it-
I wish I-
They bring the glass and whatnot. Let me just check and see.
I think the whole idea of you can't be waiting for your table.
Right.
Drink your whole bottle of wine.
Right.
Get drunk, decide you're not going to wait anymore. Get in your car and drive away. And no one has really watched it.
I think the law, I was reading like several times, I think he, the waitress or the waiter has to first serve that liquor to you. You can't just open up your container or you're sitting down.
I want the corking thing.
I didn't, I didn't, I-
Did anybody get that?
I mean, in Section 658(b), there is language that it kind of is a little confusing, but I think I, that may be where this is coming from. Pursuant to the compliance with standards deleted herein, any BYOB licensed establishment must serve any alcoholic beverages in the possession of patrons to said patrons before patrons are permitted to consume said beverage on the victualist premises.
Right. Okay. So yeah, that, that's right. So the first time, they're going to, they're going to open it and serve it at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's going to be understood by the owner of that establishment.
So you don't just sit down-
And the customers too.
Right. So you don't just sit down and start drinking. I, I think what we're getting at is what we're talking about there. Someone who just sits down and starts drinking before you do it. We want the waiter there and the waiter's going to provide glasses and they're going to open the bottle.
Suppose it's a beer. Suppose they bring beer.
So they'll open the beer at least, it's the first one. I mean, we're not trying, we're, we're trying to provide the mechanism for safety if there are problems.
I think that would be a difficult thing to regulate.
No, I don't think so. First time, first time around, let the server, because he's certified or she's certified, make sure that person is not underage.
What if it's a buffet?
Yeah, that's, it's going to be difficult to-
They're on service.
Because if you're waiting for your waiter and it's a very busy restaurant-
But the idea of this law too is not to stymie this type of business. It's to the welfare and safety of the town and underage drinking. Because if you don't have somebody watching over, you don't know if that person's 21 and bringing his own booze in there, or he's under 21 and starting to drink. You've got to have some controls of liquor problems.
Yeah, just, yeah.
That's why you had TIPS certified.
Well, that's why I'm saying that the server serves the first drink to that person.
To make sure they're not underage.
Right. And that's where you get in the law. And I just want to qualify that. Now everybody understands that this is what's got to be done. The owner, the customer, to safeguard the town and themselves. So I'll move on. We get that in. Can this retailer, this who's, have entertainment also, like this portion?
If they have-
If they have a separate entertainment license, they could. Totally separate. They may or may not have-
Entertainment license is separate, but he can have entertainment and a booze BYOB license at a restaurant with this type of, on the section first. It's not going to be covered under the section two, what you put down.
That's correct. Right. That entertainment wouldn't apply. That, the Article 5 entertainment is only for people who don't have a victualing license.
And I guess the corking thing too is a little confusing to me. But you can't take a liquor out, you can't, and you can't leave, let's see, you leave it there, you bring it there, you can't take it out. But there's corking fees, but then the state law, so that means you can override that by getting a cork and taking it home.
No, the corking fee is just a service charge.
Right.
It's to open a bottle of wine, to provide glasses, to pour it.
But taking it out of, you can't take it out of a BYOB license and you've got to leave it there, is that true?
No, you could, you could take it with you.
Because the statement there says, again, we're reading the darn thing.
Tell me where it's been. Been about two months since I wrote this.
I read it again today.
Section E on the top of page five says, "No glasses or open bottles containing alcohol shall be permitted off the premises except if the establishment uses the same procedures as permitted for the liquor licenses under what I presume is the-"
That's the Merlot-to-go, the 318.
Okay, that's taken care of. Right. And this one time, this whole law, you mentioned tavern once. Is a tavern a established liquor license places, form?
Yes.
So you can't, if you have a liquor license, you can't be a BYOB too, right?
That's correct.
Right.
So where was tavern?
It's thrown in there like a, one time. I wish I had my computer to work, even if it's not.
Okay, all right.
But it is in there. I'll say. It's only one time. I've been looking at the last version of the amendments. So it's really big, quite a few pages.
The word tavern appears in Section 6-56 on page 3.
Maybe you want to stretch that.
You need tavern or victualing license?
What was it?
Section 6-56 on page 3.
Oh, well that, yeah, but that is meant to be there because that's saying that a tavern cannot have a BYOB at the establishment. If you're a tavern, because that would be the other kind of liquor license where you don't have to serve food. So that's meant to be there to say that, that's just as you're saying, if you got a liquor license, you don't have a BYOB. It's one or the other. It's one.
Both.
So I'm interpreting that.
I think the word tavern.
I mean, there's one, it should've got one. It's a kind of a man. Technically a tavern. Yeah, well, it's because they have rooms, but that's the, that's the legal.
Yeah, it's a client tavern.
Hey, one more question about-
Sorry, Peter, that's a good.
Part B of this, which is the public event entertainment. Still, I fear that there's a danger in the future that might be underage drinking will take place. Like, it was mentioned that a large event might be taking place in Tiverton at Sandy Woods Folk Festival. Now, that's 1,000 people there or so, about 2,000. Who knows how many people, since it is free. But your requirement is only to have one individual monitor that many people. To me, is there a safeguard in the entertainment license that you would have?
So, I'm, I'm trying to craft a balance between a safety regulation, but not wanting to harm the events. I, at the moment, we don't regulate it at all. So there's, there's a real danger that could be going on there now. But, so I don't see that we're creating any new problems. And I think we're, we're making a reasonable effort to try to control it. And the point is, is that if we have the license, we have the person. If we have reports to come in, it was a festival, there were a batch of kids off in the back corner and they were drinking and nothing was done about it, that allows us to do something. So we can call on the licensee and say we had this problem. We can have a show cause hearing if necessary. And the next time around, we can say, okay, for the folk festival, you need to have five people stationed around for training or we can take stuff in. It's more to deal with that as a, rather than try to deal with every single problem upfront.
And still, it's an after effect instead of, it could throw off the event management.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I like the idea.
The same thing as a preventive measure, we have no reports of problems.
I know, you haven't yet.
I know, but I'm not sure I like the idea of deputizing these people, volunteers or otherwise, who are working at these events. I mean, what, 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 what exactly would happen if they approached someone who is underage, who is in possession of alcohol? Are they going to take the alcohol from them? I don't think so.
They're gonna call the police.
So, they don't need, they don't need the, they're not harding everybody.
I agree with you, cause they don't have authority.
No, exactly, so I'm not even sure we wanna put them in that position.
So, but, uh, maybe the entertainment license for an outdoor event that's sort of more than a hundred people, you may have to pick that up a little bit, where you would have to require proper police control of the crowds. In a set of one car, maybe you may need three policemen there to watch the, the project, or the concert. But that's another thing you have to look into, I would think.
Now, Wes, you have had outdoor events where you've had more than a hundred people.
Uh, yeah.
You have had, uh, the.
Yeah. I guess to respond to the question, I, I mean, subject to the town's approval for the, for the event to go forward, it's, um, not a free folk festival, it's pay what you can.
Right.
What we're hoping to do is do a family-friendly, old-fashioned folk festival back when you could go along without buying a four hundred dollar ticket. And the hope is that the people that can put something in the donation box will allow other people to bring their kids for free. So it's pay what you can. What that does mean though, and it's certainly the case, that it's hard for us to predict how many we'll get. Last year, we did a pizza tribute concert on Memorial Day weekend. It was one day rather than the two days we're hoping to do and it was five acts or six acts instead of sixteen, so this will be bigger. Last year, we had three hundred fifty people, that was our best estimate, and we kinda did a rough, um, head count from the stage. No problems. It was BYOB, we didn't really advertise it as such and we wouldn't do that again this year, it's just something that some people bring cool, some don't. So we had three hundred people and no incidents. Whether we get a thousand people or five hundred people, I mean, so many variables, it's a holiday weekend, weather, um, hard to tell.
But you have had these events and we haven't had any problems.
We've had two, we, we had an outdoor Shakespeare, um, festival in the fields and then last year, we had the memorial concerts. We've had two outdoor public entertainment events, yeah.
It's the hip-hop crowd, it's the problems.
Right, there's always, when it's a folk festival, you're gonna have a human nature factor. It's, sometimes you gotta think about that, that's, I'm just trying to bring this up and make sure that we're not causing problems for the town.
Right.
And one more thing, and maybe there's like, they should have maybe three sections, like I was saying before, like a public event for like the library, although it might be catered, but the, uh, I mean, the cater doesn't have a liquor license, but it's just, it's serving food and it's not entertainment. Does that group, that nonprofit group or whatever, need a BYOB license?
Depends on where it is, I would say.
It doesn't matter anyplace, let's say.
Well, if people are bringing their own booze, then they would have to have.
Like, like the library might have a, a gal.
They are having a.
And they might have it catered for food and might, then they might have a licensed caterer and they'll serve food, so that's okay, cause there's not.
You wouldn't be able to bring alcohol onto a town property.
That's all.
Serve alcohol out of town.
At the library. If it's at the library, you're saying they couldn't bring alcohol there?
I'm just saying.
You had.
So it's, it's, I wouldn't wanna do BYOB.
Once this turned over to the town, we can't, not supposed to have alcohol there.
Okay. So, okay, let's say it's a public, um, private, then somewhere, does a nonprofit, no entertainment, does he need a BYOB license?
I don't understand the situation, it's a nonprofit event that has no entertainment and BYOB.
I assume entertainment is music.
It's, are they serving food?
This is a gigantic cocktail party, I don't understand the.
Well, it'd be a fundraiser, say.
You'd still need an event permit.
I, yeah, that, you need a.
So then you could.
What kind of events, uh, permit do you need? It's not an entertainment.
There's still a level, one day liquor license.
It would be no different than what it is right now.
There's plenty of.
I'm sure there's instances.
One liquor, one day liquor license, you sell liquor, BYOB, you bring your own liquor.
I'm just saying though, to have liquor on the premises, regardless of selling or not, you need a one day license to get the alcohol at an event like that.
So.
There's already something to cover there.
So I guess you're saying, if you wanted liquor, you wanted a BYOB situation that would not trigger an events permit.
Entertainment.
Entertainment permit or an events permit, either one.
Is that like a wedding?
Yeah, I don't understand, that would require an event.
An outside wedding?
That would require an outdoor entertainment, I mean, an outdoor, unless you didn't make any noise whatsoever and there was no music and, I don't get it, I just.
I guess, there, there are these permutations that, that I can see, you know, you're right, you could have it, well, we gotta cater it, we're gonna sell the food, we're gonna charge admissions, but you can bring your own drinks and I don't think we've calculated anything. One of the things that I think would be good to do is re-revised the entertainment licensing procedure about two, three years ago.
On the count of those.
And, and for the most, for the, for the most part, it's been, it's been very smooth. The idea was make it a lot easier for most people to get the licenses, particularly the ones that you can just get from the clerk and not have to wait for a council meeting and everything like that. And I think that's worked well, that we've got more people coming in, getting the licenses. Some of the suggestions today, I think revolve around re-examining that and seeing how that meshes with that, this. I guess my suggestion would be to, um, I would request that you continue it two weeks, I'll make the change versus the annual on each event, then let's adopt this and then going forward, we can look at it in connection with looking at the event licenses again and maybe we do need to add more or mesh them together a little bit better.
Okay.
I, I, I have one question. I'll advance this on weekends, but you can go to Westport Vineyard, you can go to Dominic Vineyard, you can go to Secundant Vineyard, they charge you ten dollars a carload, you're BYOB, they sell liquor, they sell food, and you still have BYOB. So are they in violation of some kind?
Well, it's no escape.
It's legal, correct?
It's legal, yes.
There's no policeman, it's, it's a two hour, they have live entertainment, it's, it's beautiful. Let it be.
And I'll start singing. Um, any other comment from the audience?
Hi, actually, uh, my name is Lori Roy, I live on Stafford Road and I'm just curious, are a butter's gonna be notified just like they are in liquor licenses, that for anyone who's gonna have a BYOB, but they don't have a liquor license and they have a restaurant, are they gonna have the same requirements as a regular person coming in to file for a liquor license?
For the, for the victualing establishments, I think the answer is yes. And, and it would be similar that, we've tried to track it, so they'd get, the first time around, if someone doesn't have a BYOB license, there's gonna be an ad in the paper about it, um, and notification. The second time around, it's just gonna be listed with everybody else, whether or no one from the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much on that. And as far as the ones with the victualing licenses, you mentioned entertainment and then coinciding with an entertainment license. However, if you have an establishment that just has a victualing license, you're kinda forcing them into an entertainment license and I'm not quite understanding that, I don't think.
No.
Wouldn't you just do a BYOB without an entertainment license?
Right, no, I, I think that's what you're saying, you could have either. You can have a victualing license, you could have a victualing establishment with the BYOB and not entertainment, you could have victualing with entertainment and not BYOB, or if you wanted to, you could have all three, I think that's what you're saying, you don't have to have all three.
The distinction I was making, Lori, is that the, sort of, the entertainment, the public entertainment, the BYOB like the Sandy Woods and that kind of thing, you have to have an entertainment license or a special event permit in order to have the BYOB. You just can't have a BYOB license, you know, I, I can't just buy an open field and decide I'm gonna, it's just gonna be a BYOB field.
Okay.
It's gonna be an event or it's gonna have.
So you're talking about a BYOB possibly being singular licenses as well?
No, we're not a lot, that's what we're not talking about.
But in special events, that is a single license, like a, if there.
It would have to be coupled with, it would have to be coupled with the, the special outdoor, outdoor event permit or whatever.
Okay, and an F1 license doesn't pick it up? Because F1s are the ones that are serving.
Right.
Versus.
Right, that's where they're serving it, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Whether they're charging or not, or whether they're charging a free price or not.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you're talking about BYOBs being once a year, something that's a once a year, but then you're also coinciding with the special event, which is not a once a year, you know, for one group, it could be just one event.
That's all, two separate chapters here, that's all we've got, Article four and Article five, we've got two separate sections, two separate types of.
I think we're complicating this a little more.
Well, I just think that these are questions that actually come up, that we're faced with and sometimes I'm afraid that we're liable for, so I wanna make sure we cover those kinds of things.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the public? So what I'm gonna do is continue this to the next meeting and we'll come back with the amendments.
Public hearing, we have a motion, please.
To continue, yes.
We have a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Um, motion remains second, all those in favor? Opposed. Excuse me. Taxation, Town Code Ordinance, Chapter seventy-four, Propose Amendment to Section seventy-four forty-eight, which regulates the amount of exemption for elderly low-income taxpayers based on annual income, Correspondence Three, received from Sheldon Edward Saber, Peter Monis, and Counselor Shabon.
Good evening, Town Council. This is being brought to you mainly for the reason of expanding this program, the elderly low-income, to basically kind of try to correct a perceived injustice in the program where the income limit right now of twenty-two thousand dollars applies to any number of households, so if you're a single household, the limit's twenty-two thousand, if you're a multiple-person household, it's twenty-two thousand. Over the years, my office, or the Tax Assessor's Office, the, the major complaint regarding the elderly low-income program has been the multiple-person households, they feel like they're not being treated fairly, uh, because that income limit applies across the board. So, in discussions with the Exemption Committee that has been formed within Town Hall with several departments, um, we took a look at the current state statute, which allows an exemption up to thirty thousand dollars, but our current ordinance only goes up to twenty-two. And we took a look at, um, other towns, what they're doing, we took a look at federal poverty levels and how they relate to the current program. So what we are presenting is to basically, uh, expand the program to reflect these multiple person households and instead of just having income limits that really weren't based on anything, um, we would like to tie that to the federal poverty level, which a lot of programs are tied to. So it's easily defined, people understand it, and we also wanna change the tax credit to a fixed credit, instead of a credit that will fluctuate year to year depending on the change of the tax rate. So that's one area also people kind of get confused about, it's like, well, how come one year it's this number and the next year it's another number? So if we just keep it at a one thousand dollar flat level for the highest level, seven fifteen and five hundred, um, we feel it's more easily explained. In order to accomplish this, we would have to go to the General Assembly to have the state statute amended, um, to allow for this credit. But the main thing also that we wanna deal with the state statute is amend it so that whenever the town does want to amend their local ordinance, um, we don't have to go back to the state every single time that we want to adjust the local ordinance.
This time, I'd like to open the public hearing, um, any comment from the public? Any comment from the public?
I did send a letter in about this, about basically, I didn't realize the town was revamping their senior citizen exemption for property taxes. And then my original concern was to, that the town should try to promote, you know, commercial development so that we can get more revenues in the town that could support things like this and other problems that you have in the town such like overtime, capital spend, etc. So what I came across, well, through a friend of mine from Milltown, that, that Milltown has this program too for tax exemptions for senior citizens. And it's, um, pretty simple, it's a chart and, although the figures might not be feasible for the town of Tiverton, cause the Tax Assessor should have to look them over and see if they're, you know, doable. But, um, their program is, um, exemption for basically any senior citizen that owns property in Tiverton, gets a basic rate of exemption, a figure, and then it goes up higher and higher for those that have low-income problems. So, um, I think you, if you wanna look that over and discuss it too, if you wanna have an altered it, and have the town Tax Assessor look at it first too, um, and see if that's a viable, you know, way to go. But, couple things I would like to see that make sure that it's, across, it's gotta be exemption for a property owner and the problem of, uh, income for a household seems very hard to determine sometimes, because you're not gonna get probably all the information. So, um, that's gonna be worked out a little bit. And a person should live in the town at least, at least five years to qualify for this exemption. And I would think also that this resident who gets the exemption is a qualified voter of the town, so that we're not subsidizing somebody that has, maybe a few people, not that many, has opportunity he used to live in another state part of the year and come to this town and seek an exemption. So I just wanna make, although that's probably very rare, but just to make sure that, eliminate that problem, that the, this exemption is given to a registered voter of the town of Tiverton. So that's up to you guys, thanks.
Do we do that now, Dave?
Um, yes, under the current program, we, we do investigate, even with the current program, um, everyone who does apply, we do veer, we try our best to verify, Peter's absolutely correct, you know, and I did talk to Counselor Souza about this also. We have to take a little bit of a leap of faith that our residents are being truthful, um, so we do rely on the information that they do provide. However, um, we, we don't just sit there and just accept it at face value, in some cases where we may be suspicious of the information they provide. We do cross-reference motor vehicles that are registered at their location and we have disqualified several people because they don't indicate who currently lives with them. We have disqualified people who actually do claim other states has their legal residence. So we do cross-check as best as we can currently. Under the current program, you do have to be a resident of the town for three years, sixty-five years of age.
You have to be a resident?
Um, property owner, I'm sorry, for three years.
You have to be a property owner for three years.
Correct.
Comma, sixty-five years of age, or is there a period after that? Cause.
One means, one means you have to be a resident aged sixty-five for three years.
Right.
Or, one means you have to be at, you have to be sixty-five, no, the day, the last day of the third year you're in.
No, they, they have to be a property owner, um, for three years regardless of that time period.
Okay.
So they could have been sixty-two.
Yeah, okay, great.
Any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the public? Town Council, any comments?
Question, would this apply to, for instance, people that may own the home but not the land?
Yes, because they are, if they own the property, they are a property owner in town, they do not have to own the land. So people who own the condominium, this would apply to them.
Technically, those people own an undivided share in all common areas, including land.
Correct, correct. I, I think it's more the perception.
You're talking about a land lease, like, I think on Stafford.
Country view, for instance, where, you know, they, they, the land.
Right, and, and it's a lease, right.
There's properties on the pond like that too, I believe.
So I'm just.
Yeah, well, there.
A lot of people down there would probably qualify for some kind of.
Yeah, as long as they own the real property, yes.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any other questions or comments from the council?
I have a, I have a few. Question on Section 7448(c), on the second page. It goes, that is greater than 170% and up to 200% of the federal poverty level guidelines. So you're replacing the 18,000 to 22,000. Does the 200% get us up to 30,000?
Yes, actually, we're going to take in consideration now multiple-person households. So that too, at 200%, would actually be at 31,460. If we were to apply poverty levels of 140%, 170%, and 200%, a two-person household at 200% under the current federal guidelines is 31,460. That's why we're going to also need to adjust the state statute to get rid of that threshold of $30,000 as income. Because also, if we do take a look at, if a household happens to have a child living there or an undertenant, that would be a three-person household at 200%. The income limit would be 39,580.
Do they, do they, do the federal guidelines consider minors to be part of the household? Or they just consider adult household members?
I actually don't know the answer, but I believe it's adults, but I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know either. I mean, it's, I would suggest it's pretty difficult for a toddler to come up with $7,000 a year in income.
I was just going to say that.
Baby honey boo boo.
I don't know. Yeah.
Moving on to, my next question is on Section E. At the end of the paragraph, it says, "The income of any other occupants, related or not, shall also be included in the total household income." I've had several residents approach me on this, where they own the property, they may rent a room to a non-relative, and they get $100 a week. And they're not benefiting by that other person. If their income is $30,000 a year, it's added to their income, but they're not part of that household per se, because it's a rental. And they can't apply for this because that person's income would also be included with theirs. And that's a concern, because there's, in order to, for an elderly person to maintain their home, they may have to rent a room.
Right.
Or rent part of their house, if it's a two-family. And that rental income does not, still may not bring them up above the poverty level. So is there anything that we can do to assist these people? Because it is a valid situation. And I, as I said, several residents have mentioned this to me, and some of them have actually moved out of town because they couldn't afford it anymore. Is there anything that we can do to take into the consideration that if it's, the total income is not taken into consideration, if it's a rental situation?
Right. I would have to sit down and confirm with Andy as far as trying to drop some language to take a look at that situation. We have had two instances in the past couple of years where people have presented that they're actually renting out of a room. In one particular case, it came to be that they were truly renting that. The other actually was a roof front. So it wasn't really rental, but they were trying to get around the income. So it's one of those situations where it's really kind of case by case. But I'd be happy to sit down with Andy and try to drop some language, if that's what the Town Council chose to do.
I think it's a, it's a valid situation.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you really could argue that those are two distinct households, that they are not the same household, even for like a exercise like this, or any other exercise. They are not actually, you know, a household, but they are, I think you could really, I would be persuaded by the argument that those are two distinct households that just happen to share portions of a residence. I don't know how you figure that out, Andy, but it's probably pretty easy. Because they're a tenant.
Well, I mean, no, the hard part is proving what they are. The easy, I mean, I think you could just even add more language here, saying the income of any other occupant of the household, comma, related or not.
Yeah.
Would deal with it. And then you still have the problem of proving it with, you know, what happens when, you know, there is someone who's supporting the family, who's providing the income, but also might be, you know, giving them 100 bucks a month for rent and saying, oh, I'm not part of the household, I'm just, I'm just a renter here. I don't know, you know, how you prove it. And I guess that's one of those things where you, you know, you make the decision, either some of those are just going to get through because there are more people we're concerned about who are in hardship condition that we don't want to be hurt, or you're going to go the other way. That's, that's your policy decision to make.
And we verify income, Dave, based on tax, federal tax returns?
If they have the file one.
And if not, it's probably pretty much de facto.
Right. Yeah. And we would provide their social security statements and any other documentation that they would have. We do take a look at bank statements as well as direct deposits. On this particular issue, mainly because time is taken as far as finding deadlines and having to give this to the General Assembly, I would suggest that if that's something that you would like to have addressed in this, that we make the amendment tonight so we can move forward instead of continuing. The language that Andy suggested would suffice.
I mean, to my ears anyway, that seems reasonable enough. I guess it, the question becomes, how vigilant are you going to be in, you know, pressing people for documentation and things like that? I mean, I really, be as lenient as you can in these sorts of situations and we say it's going to be income of any other occupants of the household. If they're not considered, I mean, we're going to do an investigation to make sure that these people, you know, I mean...
Right. I mean, most of the, we do have them sign an affidavit. The enforcement comes on the edges. And, you know, if they come in and file the form, and Dave looks out the window and sees they've driven in a nice new Mercedes, then he's probably going to demand a lot more documentation from a person who comes in a 20-year-old Toyota Corolla.
And if there, and if there's a situation where they're not claiming this rental income as taxable income, they've got bigger problems than our little violation, I suppose.
Correct. Typically what happens, if those are red flag, we do investigation.
Yeah, sure.
It's not very heavy-handed, and, you know, we do have to, you know, take a lot of this stuff on faith.
So Joan, let's adjust and we amend E.
Yes.
And Andy, what was the wording of your amendment?
In 74-48e, the last sentence would say, "The income of any other occupant of the household." That's the, "Of the household" would be added after the word "occupant."
Related or not, shall also be included in the total...
Total household income, yes.
Do you have that in?
On household.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were right.
Can we eliminate the words also in that sentence? It seems superfluous and... Yes, and it repeats itself a bit.
Say that again, Beth.
I would propose that the sentence read, "The income of any other occupant of the household, related or not, shall be included in the total household income."
So it's a miss also?
Yeah, it just makes it more confusing.
Okay. Any other?
I just have one quick question. This number on the bottom, 169, I mean, that's how many you think we use?
Count on the spreadsheet. Yeah. Based on residents coming to the office over the years, we estimate that we're probably going to do somewhere around 26 additional.
So you're looking at a total of 169 people, that would probably apply...
Right, currently the program has, I believe, 133.
I'm just thinking, it's pretty much manageable, it's not a large number. I mean, there is some abuse in there, it's not unlikely.
Not a huge percentage. And kind of, I'm sorry to address Peter's concern, I saw the question about Middletown, where you're just getting exemption across the board to anyone that's 65 years of age. Really going to take a look at that, only for the fact that we're very aware of budgets and tax rates and that type of thing. And if we were to do something like that, there would be a substantial increase to the tax rate, I believe, unless you were to reduce the amount of the exemption. But then you're reducing something that some seniors already enjoy.
That's what you're going to need, yeah.
So...
I mean, they have a lot more iterations or tranches, whatever you want to call it. It's, it's pretty much, aside from having the overall exemption over 37,000, we're within the range. It's, you know, 500 to 1,300 or 1,400, we're pretty close. That, my, my only comment was, or my concern was, that setting a dollar amount in 2015 dollars really requires you to adjust this in some frequency. And if we get in the habit of adjusting things like we have in the past every 15 or 20 years, it's very, it's very easy for that number to become inappropriate. So I think as long as we pay attention to that.
Yeah, I agree with you. The numbers that we have currently, the income limits have been since 2004, perhaps even earlier. So I'm aware of that, and I'm thinking, my vision is tie this in every three years with a revaluation and see at that point in time whether or not we should adjust those credit limits.
I mean, you can also probably take a look at what the actual impact on a overall basis after the programs, and if it's a percentage or if there's a correlation to home values, it might make more sense to do it that way. But, you know, as long as you're on top of it, we're moving forward.
All right. So what is the timeframe on getting a change done at the state? Because we could change the ordinance, but does it really take effect unless the state has changed 4-8-16?
Andy, question, but the answer is that we can have the change at the state level before we can enact.
Well, I mean, we put it in as a Tiverton-only bill.
Right.
So it's not going to apply statewide, it's just going to apply, you know, in the town of Tiverton type thing. And I don't know, I guess the question is, it's probably still too late, it's too late to apply for this year, you're too far along this year, if it were done, were passed in the next month or two? I guess it's a maybe, if we get, if it gets through quickly and passes in a month, it could probably apply this year, if not, it would have to be next year.
That's the thing, because the filing deadline is March 15th. So if we go beyond that as far as getting state house approval, then I don't know how that impacts that deadline, because we don't have the authority to extend the deadline.
Let me ask this question. If we did approve it tonight, wouldn't the only people that would be excluded were people earning $30,001 to $31,460 in a two-person household? Everybody else falls under the 30,000 mark.
They would have to fall in the 22,000 because right now, well, you're right, you'd be changing the state, the town ordinance. The only exception to that would be, we're asking the state to allow us to make it a credit and say an adjustment of the value.
As a practical point, I'm sorry, as a practical point, I think, I think you need the state amendment for it to work smoothly. It would be unrelatable to try to...
So this wouldn't be in effect till next year, then you'd say?
I, I think that's likely. I don't know. I mean, maybe it could be gotten through the legislature quickly. We're Tiverton-only, elderly taxes, we have influential members of the legislature. Maybe it could be gotten through quickly, I don't know.
But this would have to be gotten to the legislate tomorrow. Would you be Jay, give it to Jay Edwards? We could try that. Try to do that. I'm sorry, we're doing it though. Excuse me. We're doing a call again, Dave. And I can talk to Jay, I'm, so I could help, talk to Jay with you too. Jay usually contacts me every other week to see if there's anything up with us, so I'll, I'll call him too.
I seem to remember that legislators can quick put bills in, you know, if it's a town only bill.
They can do it in, but you have your own deadline of March 15th.
March 15th, right.
Getting it to the state, is that the question?
I'm just saying, I don't think it's the big rush that we're thinking is.
I'll call Jay tomorrow.
It's, it's been, I believe it's in the ordinance, maybe it's not, but this is something we can take a look at tomorrow and...
All right, I'll, I'll work with you and...
Okay.
I thought we need a motion to approve Town, Town Code of Ordinance, Chapter 74, Propose Amendments to Section 74 through 48, with the amendment that we made to Section 7448e. Is that correct? Second. Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
I thought you needed a motion to go to the state, but the state changes for 44-3-16.
I think so.
You need such a motion to...
I think it probably would be good, it's one they could say was unanimous in the council.
So did you just make that motion? Just made a motion. Motion's been made, second. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Town Council City District Board of Licenses, licensing. John, I messed up his name last time too, Skrupiac. 48 Allen D. Drive requests approval of private detective license recommendation of police chief. Chief Blakey?
I'm pleased with this matter of intent before the council to excuse. That matter, the permission, the check-in has been resolved. I have no objections.
Wonderful. Easy peasy.
Do I have a motion to grant the license?
I move that we grant the private investigator's license to Mr. John Skrupiac. That's it? For one, term of one year, I guess, right? Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Tree Warden, Annual Appointment, John Manchester, 2978 Main Road. Last time we pressed up, there was a problem. It's a go now? Okay.
I move that we appoint, make the appointment of John Manchester to Tree Warden, and as an annual appointment, he's meeting all legal requirements, but cycling our time.
Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Planning Board Administrative Officer Recommendation, the Planning Board Kate Meeshow. Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint, or reappoint Planning Board Administrative Officer, Kate, position Kate Meeshow. Is there a time or anything?
Annual.
Oh, so for the annual appointment, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor, unfinished business, Counselor Harry, update from EPW Director Steven Berucci on William Biden Reserve.
Counselor. Could you just give us an update on what's going on at William Biden Reserve?
Well, in response to our last meeting, Counselor, we whipped up some past information, and I submitted it to office that was dated January 29th, 2015, to that. And in that response, I kind of summarized as far as what I know has been going on. Back in July 21st... Back in July 21st, 2014, I summoned the planning board to secure the funds for the shoveling that they were holding. That was brought about by a personal conversation I had with the developer, Tom Costa. He basically said he was walking away from the project. I brought that forward to the planning board, like I say, in July of 2014. And we put it on the agenda. With that, I put a completion estimate. The estimate was around $219,000 for the work and there was a $15,000 contingency I put on it, which added another approximately $33,000. This project been going on for oh, 10, 11 years. The base course has been down since I've been here, which is well over seven years. And way, way back, an estimate was given for $130,000 to finish the project, but that was before several years passed. And when I went out there and like similar projects we've taken over or have been completed that have been there for a long, long time and the base course has been down, we've had them put a leveling course on, which is an additional extra inch of blacktop throughout the whole project to level it, to seal it in preparation for top course. So between these two periods of, I think it was back in 2009, when there was an estimate around $130,000 to finish it, because the road deteriorated, got old, the estimate in 2015 increased. So I asked the planning board to secure those funds. I think the funds were secured with a letter of credit. And from what I understand, the letter of credit for the $130,000 has expired. What that means legally, I'm not sure. I haven't been involved with that part of the equation, but it looks like to me we have a project that needs completion and we don't have money for it.
Well, I have a few problems with this. First one is it went on for over 10 years, close to 10 years. Now I find out that this gentleman walked away with $130,000 that we were holding. And if I'm not correct, please let me know. Does anyone know?
What was the letter of credit?
The letter of credit was returned to Mr. Costa?
I'm not re-upped, I'm not reinstated. I don't know legal.
But he's not responsible for that $130,000.
He's not responsible for $130,000 and $130,000. And we don't have it either, correct? That's gone.
Yeah, I mean theoretically it never existed. It was just a letter of credit. It was a promise to pay a certain amount of money. He paid a percentage of fee for that right to have that credit. And if he never drew on it, he didn't get the cash. And so it just sort of goes away.
It goes away?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've lost $130,000 that we might have had to do the project. Is he also trying to develop another piece of property into?
I'm not sure what he owns, just telling you the truth. I don't even know if he owns another lot still located on that subdivision.
Well, I've been first to hear of it and certainly looking into it. I want to take responsibility for what I believe is an important part of our policy here, but cleaning up is my problem. Steve and I both worked on this and it was in the summertime that after a conversation between Stephen and I, I sent an email to various people that I'd make sure I kept, which was call that letter. Because that letter was secured with the assets of a business, the credibility of which I doubted. Whether the letter expired or not is problematic. And it is also problematic that even if it was still a valid letter of credit, the individual no longer possessed the assets or the assets no longer had sufficient value to support the letter of credit, which is why I did not flip on an individual who was supposed to be tracking this. Because it seemed to me almost a moot point at that point that this project had been allowed to languish for so long without satisfaction to the law that it was actually, it didn't really matter what you did, whether you called the valid money or not, because you weren't going to get what you needed to finish the project. So moving forward, I have yet to get an update from the planning board attorney. Give me a pause. But my request was find a way to achieve judgment against this person by attaching some asset. If it remains somewhere, some analysis has been done. I know that within William Biden Estates, the contractor no longer owns any other property. So the easiest solution to attach a lot or put a lien, one way. If I find out, and you'll look at me at least tomorrow, that this individual is seeking building permits or other action from the planning board, which is a future development in this town, I think we'd all probably agree, probably over a dead body, right? So let's take a couple of days to get the answer to that question. But going forward, the planning board needs to have a policy, a timeline, and my personal view is never, ever accept a letter of credit from a general contractor of this type. It has to be a bank check or some other form of cash surety that we can call regardless of the financial status of the individual. Almost every single town in the area of, at least in the Miami kind of woods that had these kinds of arrangement with contractors has gotten bound because the nature of the business, it is difficult to be a residential home builder because you can really extend yourself, build four or five homes and when they don't sell, you lose everything. We have to be wary of that and our policies have to satisfy plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Ask some questions. Good. Mr. Beruci. When a road is being constructed, it's going to be eventually a town road. Are we requiring contractors to do compaction testing by a private company?
Yes.
So there were certified tests done on that road and compaction tests were done on that road before the base coat went down?
I was, I wasn't there, but I would assume so. I would say yes.
I'm seeing every town, I actually haven't built any, but I mean Portsmouth worked in Bristol and they, we had to have a company come in. It was like every 20 feet, you did compaction testing, had to satisfy the town before the payment. But what I'm looking at over there, it looks like everywhere a manhole went in in different areas, it seems like it all sank. It's like nobody was there. And this is where I think part of the problem with that road goes is that the base underneath it wasn't constructed properly. And that's where I think we need to look at, it should be on the contractor himself to provide an independent, you know, the independent. If, if we're doing it, it's kind of hard to believe from what I've seen of some of the subdivisions away. I mean, I mean, I saw one, the guy literally painted over stumps. The stumps were like, you know, eight inches under it. They never took the stumps out. They brought gravel over it. How that road ever got, you know, improved by the town is beyond me, but I really think we need to look at, you know, what, to cover the town and if it is going to be accepted roads and we expect them to last 30 years out, then we need, it's a policy I think we need to look at. I don't know enough about what the town requires right now, but.
The planning board does have a consultant here all the time, just like at the library now, doing inspections, doing inspections, but same thing with subdivisions. Since I've been here, you know, car and engineers been here, anytime there's a construction job, I inspect it and they have someone inspecting it also and giving reports, so.
I'm going back to when Joe Ferris was building this back then. I remember they sent the crew out there to fix a pot hole and they decided to dig down a little bit to put some fresh gravel in and they literally found a rotten tree stone in the road.
I found those digging up roads too.
Yeah, so I mean, this is something I think, you know, I'm hoping we can maybe tighten that up as well, as well as, you know, the bonding that or whatever's required of a contractor to complete a project. This kind of puts the homeowners, I mean, in a bind too. I mean, it seems that they, they were, they bought into that place and expected, you know, that one day that would be a town road accepted by the towns.
So Counselor, would you like this to be put on the, I'm done.
I'd like to follow up from.
Okay, so we'll put it on the next agenda and we'll get a follow up.
I just have one question and it doesn't need an answer tonight, but I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to at least put a time limit on some of these things? You know, you've got a subdivision that goes in, your road goes in, your binder code goes in. If it's not accepted within X amount of years, something happens, it triggers an event, whether it becomes a legal private road or it, or it triggers something that causes either action to be taken or comfort to be given, for lack of a better term, to the town.
The planning board did pass a regulation subsequent to this mess that we have, wherein three years after the base course goes down, the top course must go down. Three years, that's all they're giving them.
What is, what is the next sentence after that? What is the or else?
Or else, we take the money, the surety, and we do it.
And who keeps track about the planning board or?
I'm talking about the planning board, yeah.
The planning board would keep, they have a mechanism to keep.
To secure the funds and I would hire contractors.
Talk about that three years, who keeps track?
They do. They put that in the regulations, yeah, it's part of the regulations.
Well, just because it's there doesn't necessarily mean that it's being paid. You know what I mean? Like, what triggers them? This development's been there three years, what does the road look like?
Can I ask Mr. Teitz a question, please?
Yeah, just, that's my question. Like, who tracks that it's been three years?
Well, Kate, well, this is new because, because of this tenure thing that prompted the, the planning board to look into it and come up with a, with the new regulation, subdivision regulations, and it's three years now since it's been voted and approved.
Okay.
The recommendation might be to the board that it should have a monthly update from its administrative officer, all pending sureties and their status. Even if it's just a gloss over it, as long as somebody's eyes are going with those dates in advance and it's part of the public record, it would be an improvement.
And I don't want to sound like, you know, Ebenezer Scrooge, but a surety has two virtues in my eyes. The first is to secure payment for a worst-case scenario. The second is to greatly disincentivize a developer from walking away and leaving the town in lurch. And we should get closer to a place where in the event that that happens, the developer feels a great deal of pain, financial. So it incentivizes you to stick around. If you're going to be on the hook for a cash surety or a bond that you paid a pretty penny for, or if you're going to have some other arrangement made, or if there's going to be recourse financing, financial arrangements, you've got a lot of incentive not to just walk off and, I mean, that's, like I said, I don't want to be a jerk, but that's part of the deal. That's part of why you require people to have some skin in the game if you're putting a lot of town resources and a lot of town prop, you know, potential future resources at risk.
All right, so we'll continue this tonight.
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Teitz a question if I could real quick. If, I know for instance, like in the building trades, if somebody doesn't, if they build a house and there's a problem with the house later on, you can have another contractor come in and be a professional witness. Now say for instance, on this particular road, if a core sample was done and it was shown that the contractor didn't put in the road the proper amount of gravel, you know, in other words, if we went down four inches in foam, just regular, you know, subsoil mud and he didn't put the required, what was 18 inches, I believe, would the town have some recourse to go after that contractor?
Probably, it depends. If the town's own engineers sign off on it, I mean, we're supposed to be inspecting, if they signed off on it, it would be hard to do that. And then again, the, the real problem is trying to find, even if you've got a good case against someone, are there any assets there to collect from?
Yeah.
If most everybody uses a single entity for each development. I would echo the concerns about, and I think the town has gone that way, to, you know, not going for, not accepting letters of credit anymore, only cash surety is accepted. I do know, I do remember a couple of years ago, on a Friday afternoon, and I don't know, I don't remember the details of why it came to me, I guess we were working on a couple of these at the time, it might have been Winterberry Woods or, but the bond, the, the letter of credit was going to expire and it was a clear, it was going to expire on Sunday, which probably should have meant it was good till Monday, but I didn't wait. I was emailing and faxing the demand for a letter of credit. Fortunately, it was a local bank, Fall River. I was doing that on 455 on Friday afternoon to get it on the record beforehand and we did successfully call that letter of credit and get the money to finish the work ourselves.
So what you're saying is if we would have called that letter of credit before it expired, we would have cut that money?
Maybe, maybe not. We also had a, I also had a thing several years ago in Bristol where we had an insurance bond and we called it and the insurance company decided to fight us over it and, you know, prove it, is this drainage problem really our contractor? Didn't he do it? You accepted the road and so forth. So we got it lucky, we got it that time. It's not guaranteed every time.
Especially if the letter of credit is secured by assets that no longer exist. You're going to have to fight trying to get the bank to release money that they're not going, they know darn well they're not going to be able to collect them.
So if you really want a bond upfront, but.
You want cash. You want, you want a cash, you want a certificate of deposit, and it used to be passbooks, but you want a certificate of deposit that's in the name of the town that they have to post with you.
I think we should make that a policy.
That's the planning boards.
I had one other request and it's Mr. Beruci that if you could, or if somebody could, I'd like to see what the guidelines are as far as the testing, what I was talking about with the.
Okay. They'll be through the planning board, yeah.
Okay, well, move on. Counselor Souza, continue discussion and possible vote on future action relative to possible zoning changes along Main Road, before you, again, Main Road, Booker Mash Road, Stafford Road and Crandall Road. Joe, before we go any further with this, I would like to take a vote of the council whether or not they are interested in changing the zoning. We changed the zoning less than a year ago, had several public hearings, had public input. The past council approved it. This requires a lot of work, this requires, I was looking at it, it affects over 50 properties.
Before we vote, I'd like to just explain a couple of things.
Well, I would like to see, before you explain it, and I don't know if the council feels that this is fair, but I would like to see if we are interested in changing this as a council, before we go any further with this, because if, we have a lot of place in here and we have a lot going on and if we have no, if the majority of the council would not like to relook at this, then I think that's valid. If they want to look at it, then we'll move forward with this discussion. Do people agree with me? All right. So Joe, if you want to make a motion to see if we would like to change the zoning map.
Well, I'd like to explain where I'm going with.
Why don't you make a motion and get it second and then we'll have a discussion.
Well, I'm not asking you to change it at this time.
What, what do you?
I'm asking you to consider sending this and me to some of the meetings where they're, where they're discussing, to discuss with the, the people that are meeting that are looking to change. I'm not asking for us to sit here and vote to change zoning. I'm looking to try to get some input into the, the committee that's looking at our comprehensive plan now. And the bottom line is.
Yeah, but they're not looking into the zone, this zoning map. This, this has already been voted on and decided, they're not looking into this.
We're talking about changing our comprehensive plans. You know, comprehensive plan.
Right, but that, right.
It's all encompassing.
Right. It goes into land use.
I agree with that, but I think as a council, we have to decide if we want to send you to the planning board with this idea.
Well.
Because.
You're talking about the comprehensive.
We're talking about economic development.
I'm confused what you wanted to.
It always seems to be, it always seems to be that, well, for instance, the Companato Group, they want to come in, they're looking for a change, a comprehensive plan, so they're taking bills. My thought is what about the businesses that are already here? Where I identify these changes, there are businesses that owned by local residents that were in, this was all, this was all commercial at one time along Stafford Road.
I tend to disagree with you that that.
You have to go back to like the 80s.
1980s?
Yes.
I don't think that.
And it's been changed several times. Matter of fact. Matter of fact, when the, the plan was revised years back, some of it was taken away along Stafford Road, and because of the watershed overlay was brought in and everything. But the bottom line is, starting even down at the bottom of Blueberry, you have, you have businesses down here, you've got Ken's Autobody, you've got Phil's Propane, there's, I mean, Brandell's.
All businesses.
All businesses along here.
So, what you, I'm not sure what you're asking us as a council to do with this, because it isn't our decision.
Well, just explain, what I want to do is I want to be able, if the council...
So, you want us to approve...
If we look at these areas, areas where there are existing businesses, and many of these businesses are...
So, you want, you want the council to say, we agree with Joe's plan, that we should turn all of Stafford Road neighborhood commercial, but that's what you're saying?
No, no, if, no, what I'm asking, if, if, if you don't think that there are areas in here that should be changed, if you think maybe it should only go to a certain line, I'm trying to invoke a discussion. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because everywhere that I drew this line, there are existing businesses that need pre-existing non-conforming uses, and if you look at the definition of a pre-existing non-conforming use...
But I disagree with that.
The reason is to eliminate those businesses in that zone eventually. Do we really want Phil's Propane to leave town? Do we want Ken's?
I don't think that that's what it is.
Mr. Tights, can you please define...
I don't think that's what it is.
...pre-existing non-conforming use?
Yes.
One second, I still say the same thing I have to say, does the council want to change this? Does the council want to support, it was a two-year, I think, like, a two-year project to get the new zoning. A lot of people worked very hard, there was a lot of public hearings where the public came and spoke.
Yeah, and, and these businesses were ignored.
Well, I don't know if they were, I don't know...
Legitimate businesses, and they were ignored.
Well, you are, you are involving so many people in this, you're involving a little watershed area, you want to make all of Stafford Road commercial.
No, it's, it's...
You're on that line.
Yeah, but you can't build in certain areas, but there are actually commercial properties along that area that is also tons of residential.
Right.
That's right, if you're in neighborhood commercial, they can both exist.
Well...
If you look at the zoning, I actually didn't, that's the only one I gave a copy of the table, but a lot of the businesses...
It was the proposed table, it wasn't even the...
It was a proposed table.
It was the proposed table, I wanted to make sure names...
But do you, does this council think, does this council think that I am absurd asking for a vote to move forward with this?
No.
Because that is my question, as a council, do we want to support this? Because it's not just what you think, it's a majority.
Hey, I, look...
So, if the majority of this council wants to move forward with it...
Is because if, if you feel there are areas on this that should, like, in the watershed area, if you feel like this should be taken out, that's fine, but keep in mind, you have Tiverton, Tiverton Sign Shop, okay? It's another business, we don't, they're, they're pre-existing non-conforming use, do we really want Tiverton Sign Shop to close their doors?
But they're not going to, but they're not going to.
I don't want to bring in any questions, Joe. That's what you don't understand, okay? The guy down at the autobody shop, the man spent more money on legal fees and going to the different boards than he did on the actual addition. And he said if he could do it today, he just would have went to Westport, and a lot of businesses have just gone to Westport forever, because it's, they can't do with their property what they need to do to continue in business. They can't put up a modern building so that they're not limiting the outside, they can't put an addition on the back for storage so they can expand, they can't change their use in any way. You understand? When you create a pre-existing non-conforming use...
I understand that.
You basically doomed them and told them, we don't want you in town. That's the bottom line, that's what a pre-existing non-conforming use is, is to eliminate that use in that area.
Mr. Lambert, did you want to say something?
Actually, Joe was raising some of the same issues that I had, and while I certainly have no expertise in zoning, when I was finished with it, Joe, and you had, believe me, I do support your, your notion that we should be doing everything possible to develop commercial opportunities in town, but I, I ended up with, you know, this is my page of questions, because I understand that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, I, I understand that. But the questions I would have before opening up a rat's hole, and going back to an issue that I thought was resolved two years ago, and where everyone had an opportunity to have an input, I'm then asking myself, well, is the status of these non, pre-existing non-conforming commercial properties, is their status the same? Is, are their rights the same? And if the status and rights are not the same, if there is a difference, if, if there is something that they should have complained about two years ago, why didn't they complain?
Okay.
And then my other question is, okay, even assuming that their status and their rights have somehow been affected, impacted, is there any relief available under our comprehensive plan right now? And my understanding is that there is relief. That's why these businesses, businesses are still there, and they aren't moving out. So, my point, Joe, is this, I think it may be, this may be untimely, it may be premature, but I would like to have a planner, the town administrator, Andy Tights, or someone who understands the zoning law, and give me a full explanation before I'd be able to make an intelligent vote as to whether or not I want to risk upsetting a program that took so long to put together. And really, as I understand it, and I may be wrong on this, that the comprehensive plan is all but finished. We've been asked for extended, we've had requests for extensions, so I'm assuming that they're far along. Do we now go back and revisit some of these same issues that should have been taken care of a couple of years ago? Then, my last issue is, you know, if, if people were having these problems, Joe, I get, what you'll find on the town council, because you're a political body, is that people have an understanding that they're entitled to call you with their complaints. And believe me, what we learn is that people will call you with their complaints. I haven't heard from one of these business people. And some of these are businesses that I actually use, where I know the people, where I get my goods and services, and no one has bothered to say, hey, we're sick of this, you better take a look at turning, turning this into a neighborhood commercial zone, or something of that sort. So, I have so many questions, Joe, I would feel uncomfortable at this point supporting, doing anything, as I say, to open up the rat's hole.
Well, the bottom line is this...
And you have my sympathies.
If you want to see the tax base grow in this town, you have to give the existing businesses the ability to grow and expand, okay? They're not chapped up, they, they need help. And I took the time, and I went out, and I spoke to many of these business owners, and every one of them, particularly the body shop, I started right there, and he told me how much money it cost him to put a garage on the back, a little addition, and what he had to go through. And he said, you know what, I wouldn't do it again. And that's what you're gonna hear from a lot, if you actually went out, and a lot of these people are apolitical, they don't, some of them don't even go out and vote, they just kind of go along and try to run their business and live their own life, and, you know, as far as them coming here and complaining to you, they probably won't. But if you took the time to walk in the door of these businesses, you would hear, the one, the one business, I'm not gonna get too much into the details, but a couple of businesses, but one down in the waterfront district wants to expand, but he says, you know what, to me, just to expand, and the hoops I have to jump on with to do it, is it really worth it to me? If he does, he's gonna add employees, he's gonna add to the tax base in town. But this is what I'm hearing from the business people, I actually went out and knocked on doors, and, and a lot of the people who live along here that aren't residential, a lot of them didn't know what zoning was, but you know what they knew? That that old crappy building with the weeds growing out of the parking lot, they can't understand why nothing's there. I had people asking me, why is there no McDonald's in town, and I'm not gonna go there, because I don't think...
I am so...
So, the bottom line is this, we can keep it, if there's areas on this map that you feel are not suited, I'm asking you to work with me to help the existing businesses in this town be able to grow. Will you get over into where the junkyards are, where I proposed, obviously, junkyards are not permitted under our zoning, okay? And nobody really likes those junkyards. But if you create a commercial zone along there, that property actually becomes more valuable, you may see some different type of development. And the automotive business that's there becomes a legitimate use, they're able to put up a modern building that's energy efficient and a lot more better looking than what we have currently down there. So, by creating these zones along here, this commercial zone, you're actually opening up a chance for change.
Well, then, some means to make a motion, whether we go forward with this or we don't go forward with this, and what it means to them.
No, I have a few questions.
All right.
The first is, actually, it's, first is a statement, I'm sympathetic to this, I really am, I just have to understand a little bit better that, I, I think we all want to work towards that goal, but I don't know what the mechanism is. And your proposal is to change one, two, three, four areas to commercial, with very little backup, the map that is here, this is a, is a very important conversation to have, and I'm not sure what I'm being asked.
Well, my, my whole purpose on this was to keep the dialogue going, to come up with a plan that we can all agree to. I'm not saying that this has to be what I want, and I need you to vote for it, or I'm throwing it out. I'm hoping that we can have a conversation and come up with a mechanism to, to help these businesses...
But the whole group of people that had this conversation and worked together...
And I was there, and I was pushing for this, and I didn't get my way, so I'm not giving up. I'm not giving up.
But you're individual, and you don't have to give the place to council, you have to decide if you want to support.
Well, we're blunt, you know, if we're gonna talk about helping businesses grow in this town, there's only one way to do it, and that's allow them to do what they need to do to expand and make their businesses better. And when those businesses expand, it helps the town's tax base, which reduces the burden on the residential.
All those butters will have to have an opinion, all those butters, all along Stafford Road, this is not...
You don't want to talk with them, I have, I knocked on doors.
I'm talking...
You want to find out that people want to...
I'm talking, you have more of butters than who you talk to, I bet.
Well, you know, like you said, and, and, you know, when I knocked on, I've been borne out...
I've done, that's, that's, that you've done.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to say, again, I think we're all sympathetic to that, and I know that there's a way to do this, and, but I, I'm gonna tell you right now, it isn't by saying, I want to change all these four districts with a broad brush, and that's what, and I, and...
Joe, that's what this proposal's... Joe, I'll be very brief.
Excuse me, what did you say?
Well, this is very, very, as I, as I indicated earlier, I have no expertise in this area, but you used the example that one of these businesses, you've spoken to the owner, has had to jump through so many hoops. I guess my initial question would be, okay, we have had to jump through those hoops, even if it was a commercial zoning, does changing it to the neighborhood commercial change the number of hoops that he has to jump through? I don't even know those, those very basic elementary issues. Now, before I can say, is it balancing this, is it worth opening up a can of worms that I thought was resolved a couple of years ago?
The answer is the body shop.
Actually, actually, before you say something, Joe, I just have a question to Jay, what was addressed two years ago? Was it, was it the Main Street?
I, I must, all, everything that we've done relating to both zoning and the original comprehensive plan, and all of the charrettes, and all of the hearings, and all of the meetings that we've had relating to the, the new comprehensive plan and the redrafting of it, I assume that there's been two or three years' worth of work that's going into those projects.
No.
There hasn't been?
No, no.
And that's maybe why they're asking, no, I'm not...
Because, because you have to understand, Jay, the comprehensive plan advisory committee was, we just, we authorized it for another year.
Really?
So, it's only been in effect for a year, and at one point, it stopped meeting, I think probably in the fall, and that's why it, it ended up being, we revoted on it to continue it to the end of this year, and there has been work done, there were charrettes, I think maybe a hundred people showed up at the, at the middle school.
And anyone could have shown, it was advertised, anyone should have.
And, but again, it depends on people's schedules, and it was in two days' time, and, and it, if you weren't available those two days, you didn't, didn't have any input. This definitely, I agree with Joe, that the non-legal, non-conforming use is an issue, it has been an issue since the original rezoning of this whole map, that just did a wide brush and said, oh, this section would be residential, without taking into consideration the impact, the unintended consequences of that decision upon commercial businesses within those residential areas, becoming legal non-conforming, because you say that there has to be a path, there's some remedy, some relief, but the relief is, is not adequate, because when they do apply, they have to go to zoning board, they have to apply for a variance or whatever, that costs money, and there's no guarantee that that, what they want to do will be approved, so they've spent the outlay of money, they have no guarantee that it would be approved, and they have to prove hardship. So, by putting in, trying to change a building from the existing building, and making, taking it down and putting up a more energy-efficient building, isn't a hardship, so they're not gonna get that, so they're gonna stick with, they're gonna have to end up sticking with the old building that they have. So, so there is issues with this, Jay, and has been all along, but I don't...
I, I don't disagree that there are issues, I just don't understand, and I still feel uncomfortable in pushing, pushing this forward at this point.
May I finish? I have the floor. So, the next, the, the actual process that we go through is, you'd have a comprehensive plan update that's occurring right now. So, we, we did the extent, we extended the, the comprehensive plan advisory committee, and on that committee is two members of the town council, of which I am one member, the other member was Councilor Gilak, who does not sit on that panel anymore because he's not a member of the town council. So, certainly, if Joe would like to take that second position as a member of that comprehensive plan advisory committee, then I would suggest that, that we...
He didn't say that.
Appoint that, appoint Mr. Councilor Souza to that second position on the comprehensive plan advisory committee. That would at least get another voice in the committee to review this topic. That's one way that we can move this forward. I'm not saying that this, this is, there is an issue, we all know that there is an issue, and we need to move forward on some type of resolution. Now, I'm not saying that this is the way to do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're saying.
But I'm, I'm saying that there should be some more discussion on it, and the discussion really has to be at the comprehensive plan advisory committee meetings, to bring this up, because that has to change, and then that has to come to the council, where there's more discussion on it. So, it's, it's gonna be a two-step process, it's gonna be, they're making their recommendations on changes to the comp plan, and then those changes actually have to come to the town council for approval.
But it, but that would be the step instead of us...
You could start at that step, and then...
Or take it away from my...
I would suggest we also have to involve the planning board at some point.
The planning board is in charge of basically the comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, but I think we're, we're smushing zoning and the comprehensive plan and assuming that it, the two work in lockstep, and I don't think that's necessarily true.
Actually, it is, because part of the comprehensive plan is you have to, whatever changes you make to the comprehensive plan, you have to change zoning to match it. So, if you want to change your zoning, then you basically have to change the comprehensive plan, to reflect that you have a vision of what Tiverton is going to look like, and to resolve this issue, and I think you have to start at the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so, to keep this moving, do we, is it, do we have to appoint?
Yes, we have to, as a majority council.
We have to appoint someone to the committee?
I was, I volunteered, and I was appointed to the committee...
Right.
As a town council member.
So, we'd have to appoint Joe, if we, if we want to.
Okay, so, can we...
Pete is also interested in being in.
I'm not even sure if this is on, is on the agenda with this, but...
No, no, no.
Well, I'd like to sum up if I could.
A couple, and Trish will be Barbara that would speak.
We need to have it on the next agenda, or whatever, I mean, I, first off, like I said, I was hoping to continue this conversation, and I was hoping that, you know, it, see, the bottom line is, I don't... I was hoping that, you know, it, see, the bottom line is, I sat six years on the zoning board, I saw how zoning worked, I got a pretty good idea, and I saw a lot of people, you know, that came in and wanted, and they always had, you know, you have to show a hardship, and that's where the body shop had to go through. If they didn't have the hardship, they wouldn't have been able to. But they were able to prove that they had a hardship. I mean, there is a, bottom line is, though, we're making these businesses jump through hoops that they really don't want to go through, and expend capital that they really don't have to get through those hoops.
The job that I see.
The only way you actually fix the problem for these people is to allow them to do what they need to do. And the only way that happens is if they're in a zone where they're able to do the type of thing they want to do. You take the Glendale.
Well, they can't do anything they want to do. And there are some limitations.
With the limits of the zone. But I'm just saying, for instance, the Glendale, right, right now, there's a building that's, weeds grown, it's falling down. If somebody wanted to go in there and just put in a candle shop, and they're not going to turn a lot of fire in the candle shop.
We've already heard this conversation. We've already, we've already heard this. This is what I'm saying.
Well, I want you to understand when you're telling me this is not the way to do it. This is the only way, by changing the zoning is the only way that you allow these businesses.
I want you to point it through this town council. This isn't our privy, this isn't where it should go through the proper.
I'm just telling you that if you want to have.
And we've talked about this three times now.
And you want to allow the businesses to be, to expand and do what they need to do. That is the only method, to give them the correct zoning.
But we need to, I don't know how much more to say. We can't do it here at this level. It's, it's, it's got to go through the proper.
That's not true. We have input into zoning and comprehensive.
And then I get back to, is this council support that map?
Well.
Because that's the map that's here.
The problem is, the thing that Joe's talking about right now is different than that's what's written here. So that's what I'm trying to understand. I think we all want to keep having this conversation, but I think we can't do it under the agenda item or under the topic of, which is frankly, zoning changes along Main Road, Bogomarsh Road, Stafford Road, and Crandall Road, with a map attached that proposes massive and sweeping changes to our use table and to the, well, not the use table, but to the map and the accompanying use table. I think we're all happy to have that conversation, just this feels a little bit like finding a solution before you've really analyzed how the problem is going to get solved.
Andy?
Yeah, I think, I think there are problems, but I think I have concerns about going at it this way as well. I think, I think it's using a sledgehammer where perhaps a chisel and a, and a tackhammer are necessary. Just backing up a bit, on the good side, you did have, it did, it was two years of work with the Cecil Group going through the form-based zoning and whatnot and making the changes, and there were deliberate decisions made that you may or may not agree with, such as keeping the 10% limit, not changing the overshed, the watershed overlay district and previous surface limit even in the new commercial zones. That wasn't an accident, it was a deliberate decision. You may or may not agree to it, but it was a deliberate decision. Likewise, the extent of how far the zone was going to get extended out from four corners went back and forth, and there were requests to extend it, and in fact, the council made some changes right on the very night of the public hearing. But, so there was a lot of look at that. So that's the good side. On the bad side, or the negative side, I won't say it's bad, but the zoning ordinance itself desperately needs to be overhauled. And a lot of your concerns, I think, could be dealt with simply the language as far as non-conforming uses. I think it is possible to deal with legally non-conforming uses, not uses that people have just started doing with no permits or whatever, and they've never been legal. But legal non-conforming uses, to provide for, you know, not the draconian, we want them to go away, and that's the only alternative. There are much more of a spectrum, and you can also differentiate between different zones. Then in certain zones and so forth, they should be going away, in other zones, perhaps it's just a special use permit if someone wants to expand it, certain minimal, you can define certain minimal expansions as not being an expansion. So some of those things could be done through that, but I think that's, that's part of a separate review. As far as adding more commercial, the thing I just want to add, the waterfront commercial. At the behest of the yacht club, there was a waterfront commercial zone created, which was then overturned in the courts on technical reasons as part of the overall fight between the yacht club and its neighbors. So I think a lot of the stuff that you've got there, those zones, are things that might be considered, but I think it's too big to bite it all at one time, and I'm also concerned about the time because of two things. One, the planning board is in the midst of a major application process with the Cap Carpiato thing, which is dragged on as it is. They really need to get through that, that really, the town, one way or another, whether it's yea or nay, that's got to get done. And the comprehensive plan has to get approved and entered to the state. Yes, we've got more time, but I don't think we can open up, yes, this is a comprehensive plan thing, and a change to the land use element and the land, future land use map. But I think if you open that up now, you're never going to get the comp plan submitted to the state and approved. You can still amend the comp plan, again, for, up to four times a year, you can amend your comp plan. I think it's important to get the current iteration of the comp plan updated and amended so that it satisfies the state and get that locked in. And then I think is the time to turn to that and, you know, take it one area at a time. Look at Stafford Road first, or look at Bogomarsh Road first, look at one area at a time, which will be appropriately done by having the town council, you know, send, you can direct it to the, refer it to the planning board, and ask the planning board to review and recommend on a particular thing, once the planning board has that time in front of it as well, and the council will have the time to deal with it. But I feel that if you, if you deal it now, you're just going to get caught in a quid mire. I mean, once you start noticing for public hearing even, you've got to go through the planning board no matter why. And then if you start with noticing for public hearing, you're probably talking about $10,000, $15,000 worth of certified mail, because the general assembly has not changed the law yet. It's still a certified letter to everybody within 400 feet of every property being amended. So you've got about $10,000, $15,000 worth of notice costs alone in what's there.
Yes, you can come from this, we'd probably.
So.
Pull that first, yeah. And you're talking about the zone where it's commercial.
I can't do this, I'm going to go.
All right, there are businesses in there that some of the uses would be.
All right, Joe. You can't just.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the substance.
Well, I do, I do, because I want to make a motion to move this, all right? Because we have to make a decision as a council what to do with this, and we can't spend endless hours. We really can't, because we're not making any decision, and we're saying.
You know, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, you know, it may.
Do you want to table this?
It may be a lot of work, and I'm sorry, but the fact is, we've studied and studied and studied in this town, and we've looked at this and looked at that, and we've had committees, and you know what? The statusful opinions, and we still have businesses in this town that are crying for help. So if you don't feel that you want to help the business in town.
Joe, that's not what we're saying. It's a lot more complicated.
But this is a way to help those businesses to succeed and continue to prosper and help the town pay the tax base. This is the only way.
So do you want to table this into a, table it? No, this really isn't a public hearing, and I'm trying to get this moving, because I don't, I don't see us making the decision we're going to do this. So.
It's just that I had, I had some, Joe has some very strong ideas, and I just had some counter points that I wanted to make that I thought you might want to consider before you table it and bring it back up.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay. I'm going to give you a map, which Joe has given to you, but mine is a little bit easier to read.
Okay, thank you.
So, just in the last nine months, the form-based zoning was approved. That was a long process, but it was approved, and it was approved for Main Road and for Blissville Corners. And the Cecil Group has been working with input from the townspeople. Neither the commercial form-based study group nor the public meetings for the comprehensive community plan, was there any mention of expanding the commercial zones? If you take a look at the yellows, you will see that by adding all this commercial, it will more than triple what we have on Main Road and at Blissville Corners. Now, Joe is very concerned about pre-existing non-conforming businesses, and we should be supporting these businesses. But by opening up all of this area to commercial, either general commercial or neighborhood business, now what you will be able to do, not just by having those pre-existing non-conforming businesses, you will be able to have restaurants, service businesses, manufacture, assembly of products, a retail business with 15,000 square feet of gross leasable area. That's just a neighborhood business. General commercial, you could have a 40,000 square foot gross leasable area for retail. There are all kinds of things. These are pretty much rural, certainly from down Crandall Road, that's rural residential. Same thing with Bogomarsh. There are a couple of businesses there, but we're talking about rural residential. Same thing on Stafford Road, there are businesses there, but now you open that up to any kind of business. We're not just talking about these pre-existing non-conforming businesses. Anything can happen. In any commercial area now, you can have more than one principal building on a lot. So it's not just one building, you can have many buildings, and you can have more than one principal use, as long as it's accessory to your principal use, I mean, more than one use. So we're not just talking about pre-existing non-conforming businesses. And Joe's map shows one, says one thing, or his description says one thing, his map says another, and map trumps words in zoning. So you go from Bridgeport all the way down to Lawrence Court, that would be your waterfront. That's mostly residential. There are a couple of businesses there. And the same thing on Bogomarsh, you go from Whiffle Tree, all the way up to Redberry. This could be a disaster. You're trying to help the businesses, you're not trying to hurt the residences. People live in these areas, they don't, they don't know, and these are permitted uses. They don't have to be noticed that. All of a sudden, guess what? You're going to have a restaurant that has indoor entertainment, or weddings, or whatever, or a 15,000 square foot building for retail. So I just want to point that out to you. I'm not against economic development, and I certainly want to support our businesses, but I do think there is another way to do it, through the system, through zoning, through however you get your special use for the fees, if the fees have to be reduced a little bit, if you be going for relief. I'm not quite sure how it should be done, but there is another way to do it, instead of just wholesale changing your zoning map.
Thank you.
Trish, did you want to say something? Thank you. As the editor of the land use section of the comprehensive plan update, I thought I would just take a minute to let you know where we are in that process, since you're discussing that. As Councilor Lambert mentioned, the process started last summer, there were, the Cecil Group was hired to help us, we've had two public, we had two public charrettes. People who couldn't participate were welcome to submit information via letter or email, which many people did. And at this point, while not all of the sections are complete, the land use section is approximately 85% done. What's not done in the land use, which is the zoning section, are the updates of the maps. So after the charrettes, we had a number of group meetings, but our little, the land use subcommittee had at least five public meetings where we discussed all of the various ideas that were thrown out for land use and zoning, at which point we put together the first draft. We then had more meetings after that, and the larger group has had two meetings to go through all of the sections in their various forms of completion, and that section is ready to go to the planning board. Not to say that it can't be changed, but, you know, we've had a lot of public input, a lot of public meetings, and we're pretty far down the road, at least on, on this version. So I just wanted to set expectations appropriately that while it will be going to the planning board, and there'll be some more back and forth after that, at this point, we don't have a lot of plans to open up that draft beyond sending it to, to the planning board.
Thank you. What is your pleasure, Councilor?
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
At the very least, I think we need to change how this appears on our agenda, and maybe we just make it an ongoing discussion about these types of issues, rather than putting it forward as, you know, a possible zone change. I think that might get us a little bit, we can sort of start nibbling, nibbling.
That's how Councilor Souza is putting it.
That's fine. But we can start nibbling away at kind of the meat of the issues, and we can start to involve other people as well, and start making progress on it, because I, Joe, I feel for you, and I understand what you're trying to do, but biting off this in one massive chunk is just going to choke us to death, and it's not going to, it's not going to fix the problems, I don't think. That's my opinion, and I know you probably disagree with that, but.
So could we, do we all agree that at this point, we should wait for a few to date to tackle this? There are other committees working on things, see where we go with that, see what the comp plan is doing. Meanwhile, Brett has a committee on zoning.
It's not my committee, it's Matt's committee.
Matt's committee, but they're working on zoning problems and talking about.
I mean, it's a really slow process. We're focused on procedure and, and reviewing how we do things and where there are holes and how things can be improved.
So, that's what I'm saying, there's different committees working on different aspects of this.
And there needs to be coordination, and there needs to be a continued discussion, and it needs to be in front of the council, because we have the visibility. I just, the problem is, we can't talk about those individual solutions, those individual problems, if we are stuck in this, this, I don't even know what the, what the term is, but when we have, it's not controversy, but people get very anxious when you say you're going to change zoning, and especially when you say you're going to make these large sweeping changes to zoning. And I think we can only do that so many times, or we can only say that so many times, without doing something firm and legitimizing a proposal or a course of action that gives people in the public and those neighbors a reasonable expectation of what we are actually talking about. Are we considering changing all of these four things? Are we considering changing half of one? Are we considering just potential changes that are part of an overall scheme to try and make it easier to do business in the town and make the zoning process easier? And I think Andy talked a little bit about some of those. There are smaller steps that I think we can take that could do it more elegantly, so to speak. And, you know, we have had non-conforming uses and zoning problems since 1963, when zoning was created in this town, because it just really broad-brush swiped large swaths of land with, you know, dissimilar uses next to each other. land with, you know, dissimilar uses next to each other or across from each other, very few zones, and you know, that's what happens. We started with an existing patchwork quilt of a town, we, you know, we didn't have a tract of 10,000 acres to just subdivide and create a nice neat zone. So we are going to keep struggling with this.
So what do you suggest, Brett, so we can move on? I mean, it's.
I don't know.
I don't know, I mean.
I want to, I want to keep talking about this in future, and I don't know, this isn't the way to do it. There's got to be a way, there's got to be some firm understanding of what we're talking about, there's got to be a firm proposal, there has to be some data to support what discussion we're having, and the conclusions we're making, and the decisions we're making.
Well, I just, I'll just say that, you know, I mean, I've been looking at this for over 10 years, and I've been to all the meetings that have been mentioned, and I see the same 40 people that go to everything, so I mean, I didn't see a large influx of anybody different in any of those meetings, and I listened to all the comments, and I put my own comments in, my own concerns in this, and I see nothing in the rewrite that's concerning this problem, and this is why, that's addressing these problems, and that's why I brought this forward. And I just say again, that the easiest way, and they seem, you know, it's a little bit of expensive, but the easiest way to make life tolerable for these businesses is to allow them to do what they need to do to exist, and they can't do that under the current zoning. If you're in a, if you're pre-existing non-conforming use, and you can't show a hardship, I mean, Glenda Mary's Ice Cream is not going to get a special use permit to sell candles, because it can't show a hardship.
Well, that could be a zone, that's a zoning, that's not a town.
But if it was zoned properly, then they could just come down here, and get a business license, and a building permit to fix the place up, and they'd have a business there again, instead of looking at weeds. This is, in fact, the easiest way to fix these problems, and if the zone is going too far up Stafford Road, if the sections need to be cut out, that's fine, but truly, the only way to help these businesses is to put them in a zone where they're legal and conforming.
But Joe, you have to consider the neighbors in that area also, it's not just the business.
I agree, and that's why I've been going out and speaking with these neighbors, and I told you what I've heard, the majority of them just wonder why the building looks so bad.
Joe, I bet you, if we had a public hearing here, and you're.
The same 40 people that show up, everything would show up.
I gotta tell you.
I've been to them all, you can't tell me.
Joe, if you're going to change the zoning on Stafford Road, all those people in that watershed area are coming here, they have restrictions, and now you're making that whole area commercial.
Well, no, what I would be doing, making the businesses that are already there legitimate.
But you have.
You're also destroying a neighborhood, their values, their way of life.
You're talking to people.
I went and spoke with a lot.
I talked.
I've been on Crandall Road. The neighbors, the neighbors are not complaining, the neighbors want those ugly buildings fixed up.
I've had it.
Don't tell me the neighbors are going to complain, I've been out speaking with the neighbors, they want those ugly buildings fixed up, and they wonder why they look so bad. And most of them didn't even understand it was because of the zoning.
Joe, I think right now, this is your personal agenda.
That's right, and this is why I ran for this council.
Well, it doesn't belong here.
Well, it's not like I'm going to profit from any of this, all I want to do is help the businesses that are struggling in this town. That's all I want to do, is help the businesses that are struggling in this town, and they have spoken.
I'm going to move forward, and we're just.
I'm learning a lot about zoning, and I'm not going to say I'm an expertise in it, because I'm not, it's not my forte either. But what I don't see here is all these people that you're talking about, coming over here and talking to us.
Right.
I don't see one person come and say, I can't extend my garage.
I also don't see anybody coming here complaining because.
But Joe, they're not here supporting you, they're just.
Does anybody come and complain about the zone change on Main Road to you?
No, me neither, so.
Because the majority of people don't even understand zoning, believe it or not, it's, and don't, all they know is there's an ugly building.
But I'm not going to go out there and talk to them, and that's fair.
Well, I do, because I want to be involved in this.
You have had this on the agenda for three meetings, and none of your business people are coming here to support you.
I haven't asked them to come in yet.
But it's been on the agenda, they can come forward and do it.
If that's what you want, I'll have them come in, okay.
I'm going to move on.
We'll put this on the agenda, and I'll ask some of the people coming in and explaining to it.
It's not disputed that this, that these people need relief, I.
We can't do it by ourselves.
No, this is the method, we need to do it, or we don't.
Well, see, that's the problem, there are more, there's more than one way to accomplish, solve these problems, and if you're unwilling to come to the table and talk about alternate ways, and that is your only, and this is the only way you're willing to do it, then I'm sorry, I'm not willing to do that. I don't make decisions with a gun to my head.
It's not the only way I'm willing to do it, when I'm saying it, it's the only way that it's going to give relief.
So it's the only way that you think, there's no compromise in this?
Can you tell me a different way that you want to give relief?
I don't necessarily know if it needs to be done. I don't know if those changes.
I asked, this is what I first asked people to go out and look at these buildings. You know, I went out and spoke with a lot of these people.
I'm moving, I'm moving.
And as I said, they're not complaining about the zoning change, what they were complaining about was an ugly building that's bringing down their property.
Joe, we've gone over and over and over again, I'm moving on, I'm moving on.
Like I said.
Financial business, Councilor DeManderis, that was, I have nothing to add with the budget, we have a meeting Saturday at 9:00, everyone, and Thursday night is the Budget Committee meeting, where they're going to discuss the fire department, so it's the chief, Matt, I'm planning on attending also. New business request by the Tivian Garden Club for permission to hang two banners on town property from April 25th to May 9th, to publicize Tivian Cleanup Week fence at the entrance of Bogomash Road Playground, and on the side at Town Farm Garden on Main Road. Is anyone here from the Garden Club? Nancy?
She, Barbara Headed, was unable to make tonight's meeting, but we did run the size of the banners through Jody and the building officials, and they were fine, and it's the same as they have done last year, but it is going to be hung on town property, and it's actually for the week of April 25th to the 9th, which is going to be the cleanup week.
April 25th to the 9th?
So do I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, it'll be up from April 25th, it'll be May.
It'll be hung, yeah.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this?
I have a motion. I move that we approve, or give, grant permission to hang banners on town property for Cleanup Week, which is from April 25th, I'm sorry, it's from May 2nd to May 9th, the banners will be up from April 25th to May 9th, and I encourage everyone to participate.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made, the second, all those in favor, opposed. Town Administrator requests permission to advertise for lateral hire firefighter positions. And this is some of what we talked about at the Budget Committee, the Budget Meeting.
That's correct, so this is follow-up to that. Chief, I know, you know, we've got two out IOD, there's always rumblings of this guy or that guy, we're living for another department, we need a list. The idea here is we're going to try and pick up some folks with experience, so it can waive their training requirement, put them on the trucks right away. What we're going to do is change the way the profession works, these guys will come over, and they'll be probies. Probationary period protects the town, they start at the bottom in the seniority and pay, and they work their way up the way everybody else does.
And this is one of the overtime solutions, because we won't be paying these people overtime to cover vacation, sick time, or whatever.
We're trying to fill a hole that was created by the IODs, and we're also trying not to create another hole on the other end by taking a training officer off his shift.
Okay.
So it's one part of the plan to address this problem.
Would you like to add anything?
It is just something I have seen, it's something that's worked out, in the West, there are several departments that are doing it, Denver was one of them, I followed, got all their package and all the things, they had used it for both police and firefighters. And what you're asking for is, you're trying to hire someone who currently has been a firefighter somewhere else, maybe at the end of their career, and look to make a change, but still be a viable candidate to come over, or in the case where Fall River has laid many people off, someone that would have had, who have separated from the department within the past, and I believe we put in there 12 months. There was an active firefighter, so they would have done everything to get to the hiring process, we're just saying, we're trying to offer you a job here, see if we can get them in the door.
Thank you.
Somebody explain why it says it can only be a Rhode Island, you have to be from Rhode Island to apply?
No, that is not correct.
That's not correct.
You have to be a licensed Rhode Island paramedic or cardiac.
Licensed Rhode Island.
Why do you have to be licensed Rhode Island?
Because you can't ride on a rescue in the state of Rhode Island without a Rhode Island license.
But you can be a firefighter.
You can be a firefighter, but you can't ride on a par.
I mean, if they're certified en masse, I mean, I don't understand.
No, it's just, it's medical, that's.
It's the medical aspect of it.
That's the medical.
All of our firefighters.
Now, somebody has all the same certifications from another state, they can't apply?
Well, they can apply for reciprocity.
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 Right.
They could apply, which is just usually a fee, and not the whole testing program.
All our firefighters and paramedics all have to ride the rescue. Every single one of them are licensed to operate the medical rescue within the state of Rhode Island. If they are a paramedic, because Massachusetts does not have kayaks, they have paramedics, when to be a paramedic, you can be a mass paramedic, but then you can apply for National Registry, which will give you the reciprocity in Rhode Island. It's a very simple process, but we need it for us.
So if you're, the guy who just went to class four, he's not a paramedic?
No, he's a cardiac.
He's cardiac already?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
He has to be cardiac to get on the job.
Yes.
All right, so, all right, I'm understanding it now.
Okay.
Chief, but the reciprocity for Rhode Island licenses is just an administrative thing, right? Most of these guys would know that they could file, it's probably the State Board of Licensing, or is it, or medical licensing?
It'd be from medical licensing, they go to the health department unless certified.
They do it a lot.
They do it a lot, right? Most now that are on the border like this are already licensed in both states, because they're working on both sides of the state, they're either working on a private ambulance in Rhode Island, or they're in a mass ambulance that's crossing Rhode Island borders, so most of them carry.
And we've hired, we've hired forever, and they've just.
Oh, absolutely.
We do it a lot, so it works. All right, does anyone want to entertain a motion to advertise for lateral hire firefighter two positions, Matt?
Let's build the West and see how many we need to have. I feel like the Easter Bunny with the eggs.
All right, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Motion's been made, and second, any discretion? All those in favor, opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bids and requests for proposals, open public forum and announcements, comments and questions, Roger Bennett, status of sidewalk and road problems.
First, I'd like to object to the move of the public forum from the beginning to the end of the agenda. The move appears to be an effort to discourage the public forum by requiring people to sign up before the meeting, and then to spend three or four hours waiting to be heard. Also, anything at the end of the meeting is less public, and not all the appropriate people are here. It has been six weeks since I first appeared before the council on January 12th with my letter of complaint about the sidewalk and road problems. Any person driving on Main Road can see the snow on the sidewalk, and can see at least eight huge five to six-foot-high piles of snow that have been plowed from driveways and parking lots. I know that the entire sidewalk is covered with snow plowed from the road, but I also know that the snow plowed from the road will be walkable several weeks before the larger piles of snow from the driveways and parking lots will be melted. My question is, how many tickets have been issued? How many warnings have been issued? And how soon will the snow be removed?
We can't really, Andy, we can't really make comments here, do we just listen?
That's correct, you're listening to them, you can refer it to the administrator or whatnot, but not to respond.
Well, Mr. Blakely should be the one to answer those questions.
Well, we'll get.
Only since you pushed the item to the end of the agenda, I don't believe Mr. Blakely is here, is he?
I don't know where Chief Blakely is.
We're not supposed to.
Well, it's at the end of the meeting, most people have left.
We're not supposed to address public forum anyway, this is just.
Well, that's a, that's a policy that the previous council had, I don't think we ever voted on that, as far as this council, as far as the policy.
You can put it on the agenda.
You can put that on the, yeah. Roger, the reason why that I put it at the bottom is, I'm trying to see if it works, because a lot of times, what was discussed at the public forum was actually items on the agenda, so I thought, and I, this was an experiment, I thought that maybe if, if we put it at the end, a lot of people's concerns would have already been addressed as we went on, so that we're not discussing the same things over and over again. And it was just to see.
Doesn't, doesn't work very well for me.
Complaint, yeah.
Because I, I'm here three and a half hours waiting.
I do have to tell you that twice now, the things on here, we have discussed throughout the agenda, people were able to speak to us, and we were able to make decisions, as opposed to a public forum, where we can't do that. So that's why I did it. Yeah, the first complaint, we'll review it as a council, see if we want to change it, I wanted to try it for a couple of months.
There's a much more efficient way of doing it, you could put Part A and Part B. Part A at the beginning, and when somebody shows up for Part A, if it's on the agenda, you say, sorry, you're kicked to Part B, because that's already on the agenda.
We'll consider that, we'll talk.
And that would solve the problem, some people waiting for three or four hours, and it would also solve the problem that people have left.
We'll talk to, we can refer this to Chief Blakely, what are we referring though?
Well, one thing I'd like to bring up about what he's, his issue, is that I've noticed it myself, that there's, a lot of people are pushing snow off of their property across the roads, and it creates a winrow.
Andy, we're not supposed to discuss it then.
Right, my understanding is you can, it's the public to provide things, you can refer it to someone, but you're not supposed to be discussing it, because again, it wasn't on, the details aren't on the agenda, so other people who may have the issues, they don't have the right to be here for that. So it's for raising items, not for solving.
Well, the last time you told us that that was a policy that the previous council had, in that we could speak on the issues, that was your opinion the last time we had talked about it.
We can add items to the agenda for discussion purposes only.
Well, the only problem is.
Thank you, Roger.
Well, can the item be added to the agenda, so I can get some discussion on what's going to be done? Because nothing's been done for the last three years.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
And I'm tired of it.
I will put it on the next agenda.
The problem with this situation is, we have no opportunity to prepare or do anything, we're put.
You've had the opportunity since January 12th.
All right, Roger, I will put it on the next agenda, and we'll discuss it.
I'll bring it up when the council.
The council.
I also know that the branches overhanging the sidewalk and the six-foot weeds have not been removed because of the snow on the sidewalk. However, the DOT had several months before the first snowfall covered those six-foot weeds. I know that the potholes on Highland Road and the destroyed section of road on 173 Highland Road have not been repaired, but another question comes up, has the RI DOT been advised of those safety problems by the town? You know, the answer to that question.
I can't answer that, I'm going to put it on the next agenda, and we will discuss it, but the questions have been noted, and we will discuss it at the next agenda, and we'll look into it.
We can get to all of these answers, the only comment I would make is that the Rhode Island DOT doesn't work for the town council, and neither does, I mean, we can, we can get you information, we can't do much more than that, and we can inform, we can have the town administrator inform the proper bodies and authorities to your concern, we.
You're talking about the stuff with respect to the RI DOT.
I'm talking about everything.
Yes.
Well, I would, I would think that the council can go a bit farther than that, when laws are being violated, and people's lives are being threatened. During a normal year, this is a one in 10 or 20 years that we've gotten this much snow as we have in the last 30 days. During a normal year, within three days of a snowfall, the sidewalks are walkable, they're either clear because the snow has melted, or they're clear enough so with a pair of boots, you can walk on the sidewalk. However, you cannot walk on a sidewalk around the six-foot piles of snow that six or eight or more people. or more people in the Stone Bridge section are plowing from their driveways and parking lots and dumping on the road and they, they're allowed to, because the town has not told them they're violating the law and has not given them a summons or a warning. I, I don't hope to get people given large summonses, but I would think that the least that the police could do would be to give them a warning notice and tell them, if you remove it within two days, you won't get a violation.
Even if the police have time to go to every single street and see who's putting snow on the road.
Roger, what I, what I will say.
They will find out, they will have time, once the town is sued
I'm moving on.
In a multi-million dollar suit for wrongful death, because somebody was run over when they had to walk out into the middle of the road to get around the snowpark.
Roger, just make it clear.
We aren't unsympathetic, and I will just reiterate, the, all we can do is provide you with information and provide guidance to the town administrator. The police department and the police chief do not work, work directly under our command. So there is a chain of command here that has to be followed, and it, I, I do appreciate that we are the figureheads of the town and we are the receptacle for people to, to bring these things forward, but we don't have sovereign authority over everybody in town and every, every department.
I just hope something can be done before somebody dies.
Well, I think one of the things that need to be done is the town could perhaps make public in some way that, uh, that there is an ordinance and a state law, that you're not supposed to push snow across the, out of your property, across the road.
We haven't even known that.
So some kind of an education process, I think, needs to happen, whether it's in a public notice in the papers or whatever, to, you know, first give a warning that if you do it, you could be fined.
Alright, I'm moving on. Council announcement, comments and questions, anyone have any?
Well, that was my, that was my council comment.
I just have one comment, if I may. I think that I'm speaking on behalf of the town council and most of our taxpayers when I say that we should commend our Department of Public Works for the absolute excellent job that they did during this season. I had the opportunity to, uh, to go to one of our other communities in this area, I won't, I won't bore you with the details of how, how, the impossible job of trying to get through the streets in that particular city, uh, but, uh, nothing really, I think, compared with the great work that our DPW did, and all of the men should be commended for their, for their hard work.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, I think we missed the town administrator items and announcements.
Yeah.
So sometimes I, um, I think we've got some important things to go over, and it's so late in the evening that I just cut them off in order to make the meeting short, but I'm gonna belabor a couple of points for all of five minutes if you'll indulge me. One is a very quick apology to the Budget Committee and some of my department heads, I haven't been able to attend every Budget Committee meeting. Friday the 13th was a very bad day for me, I guess I'm a believer now. Uh, my car died and my well pump died at home, and every ounce of snow that was in my driveway, I had dumped on top of my well pump. And so, I had to hire a guy and it took us all night to find the pump, fix the pump. So, it's been a long, painful course of several days and my family, it was my priority, and the vision of my wife melting snow on a salad bowl in the microwave so she could flush the toilet is not something I want to see again. Uh, but we got, uh, we got all of our pioneer badges in the Lurdic family for about two or three days. The point I want to belabor is this, I wanted to say a couple of words about, in our current budget environment, what it means to bargain in good faith in, in our negotiations with our collective bargaining units. I believe it's a responsibility of the town's representatives to be straightforward and honest about the budget challenges that the town faces, and to explain in the greatest level of detail possible to many of our very hardworking, very loyal employees, why we simply cannot walk into a room and agree to double-digit increases in their base salaries. And therefore, I want to make it clear to everyone that we've put forward several, we have so little left. When we look at the budget, we're gonna pick up a new general obligation bond, and then you're gonna pick up some operational expenses associated with a new building, you have precious little left, and so we're trying very hard to be creative. The fact that we're bargaining with two major units, bargaining units at the same time, we are trying to balance their needs, the needs for managerial prerogatives and structure, along with their stated desire to catch up to what they believe is their peer group. And so, that's why I'm belaboring the point, I think bargaining in good faith on the part of the town means, bringing all of those concerns to the table and scoring the fiscal impact of any potential contract properly. You would think I don't need to say this, but the cost of a contract with a one, let's use random numbers, a hundred dollar increase in year one, a two hundred dollar increase in year two, uh, an increase of one hundred, and then another increase of one hundred. So three years in a row of increases of one hundred, the cost of the contract is not three hundred. The cost of the contract is one hundred in year one, and if you add a hundred to a hundred you already have, it's two hundred in year two, add another a hundred in year three, on top of the two you're already giving, it's three hundred. So the cost of one hundred per year increase over the course of three years is six hundred units of whatever you wanna call it, dollars, needles, widgets, whatever you learned in economics class. The point is, scoring these contracts with their fiscal impact always refers back to the base year and the change from that base year even out to three years. I think that's a surprise to some people to realize that very modest increases in wages actually yield half million dollar impacts to the town dividend over the course of three years. And we cannot bargain responsibly, we can't get on over our skis and overcommit to taxpayers in this town, given library bonds, landfill closure, and other significant issues the face, the town faces. So I just wanted to set that as a context to our conversation in executive session and give taxpayers some idea of what it is we're talking about, is how do we, as a town, have an appropriate strategy for coping with those issues? Those are the only things I wanted to bring up, Madam President.
Town solicitor items and announcements, Mr. Tights.
Thank you. Madam President, the first item is one that, notwithstanding the late, the late hour, I, I do look for some input from you. The Essex Library will soon become surplus, um, and the question has arisen before and come up again about what to do with it, and now, um, really can't wait any longer. Um, I provided you with a memo as well as a copy of a memo that I had done back in 2011, and the will of Lydia Essex, and, uh, there's a typo, it's a minute from the 1937 financial town meeting, and an article from the Library Journal about it. Anyway, the short answer is, the town cannot just use the library building for some other purpose, um, without going through some action. And that action I think is necessary is to go to the Superior Court, um, and name the Rhode Island Attorney General as a defendant as well. Um, I think it is very likely that the town would be able to use the prop building for some other remissive purpose, such as a town hall annex for other offices and storage space. Um, I think it's also likely that the town could put it up for sale and use the money towards the new library, um, which could include, you know, paying debt service on the bonds. Other uses of that would be probably less likely to be approved by a court as being in conjunction with the direction of the original benefactor. Um, what I'm looking for from you is direction of confirmation, I have the complaint ready to file, but for the last paragraph asking for the relief that we're asking, you know, what are we asking for? And I think we're much better off if we ask specifically for what we want than ask for a variety of relief from the court, that's just going to confuse things, um, and perhaps get us what we don't want.
I don't think that we never have a plan on what we want to use that for yet, and I'd like to refer that to the town administrator to decide what he feels we need to use that for.
I, I think without exception, one thing I think I always come back to, the only other choice, is that the building that we very well sued for us to use as an archive, public access to public records, and some of our other items of historical interest that we have buried deep in our basement in this building. But I don't feel that the basement of this building is an appropriate place for some of these rare documents and important documents. And it would be analogous to a library use and that material that's necessary, I, I cannot at this point imagine using it for anything else, given the limitations of the building and the limitations of our budget. Because you have to, you have to have restaurants and ADA accessibility and all of these other things that go to public buildings, and we'd be struggling to do that on just one floor with our current situation.
Can I ask Mr. Tights, please? You had said that if, if the sale, if we had chosen, say, to sell the property and donate the money to the library trust, they could, it, that would be an accept, that would be an, you think that would be an accepted, uh?
Well, well, I, I didn't say specifically donate it to the trust, but that would be one, but, but that it would go into the new library in one form or another.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that would be something acceptable as well, because it ties in with what the donor wanted.
But the property itself would not be used as what you wanted.
That, that's correct.
But it's no longer a library anyway, so, I mean, it's, but the intended, the intention of the, giving the library aid was the whole purpose of, my only point being is I don't want to see another Juddson streak, that building is already, you know, very worn out, and it needs, it's gonna need a lot of work, and just to use it for storage, my opinion, I just think we need to get, be another white elephant, that we need to just get off of the tax rolls. And I would be, you know, my personal opinion is that, you know, if we could dispose of the property and help the library out with the funds, that, you know, would help them through some budget years maybe, or, or to, uh, you know, do what they need to do, is their, is their.
Uh, Mrs. President, my, my question is to the town administrator, could we find out realistically so we can make an informed decision? What the town knew that property might be on the, on the market? I mean, I, I can't see many uses for an old library, I mean, I don't even know how you turn it into, I don't even know how you turn it into an old, I don't know how you turn it into a house. Uh, yeah, but this is smaller. Well, I, I, well, I still have the question, my question is, if you were to put this on the market, what, what would we anticipate as a, as a price for it? If somebody's gonna tell me, oh, well, we might get twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars, which is roughly what we were getting for the old, for the other schools, I'd say to Mr. Rojek, oh, look into the possibility of using it for an archive. We have, we have to put this, these documents somewhere.
So why don't you get us, for the next meeting, the property value, and then for the next meeting, we'll decide what we want to do? Okay.
What do you mean, get us the property value?
I was gonna say, I.
That's not an easy.
I didn't, I know, well, that's what Jay wants.
Do we want a best guess, or do we want a formal professional appraisal? Appraisals are expensive.
Professional appraisal, what's the money's benefit?
Yeah. I'd like something realistic, whatever they want to call that, even if it costs us a few bucks.
Okay.
It's an appraisal, Jay.
Yeah, but, uh, professional.
Don't mind me, I'm charging attention to this.
So.
Both your choices.
I think that, that's a waste of money, but, um. You can do it.
Well, do we have to be absolutely specific in filing this, or can we say A or B?
We can say A or B, I think it would be better to pick which one we want.
I don't think it would be better if we had one, one purpose.
If we had one purpose, um, the A or B gives us the chance that the judge will to say, well, go back and, you know, what is it you want? You're supposed to ask for what you want, what is the relief? And the more specific we can be, the more likely we are. If we, more general we are, the less likely it is to be granted.
Just one other question, didn't the library? Yeah, but I remember them saying that there's gonna be an archive in the library to help for, for important, I guess, historical documents, is that what we're talking about?
No, I think what we're talking about, Councilman, is really large numbers of planning
board and other documents that are not part of land evidence, but are still required to be kept in perpetuity.
The, the new library is more artifacts, pictures, and postcards, and documents, and things like that. I have a couple of just quick comments. My, my first comment is, I fear if you order an appraisal, it is going to be both inaccurate and, uh, have a shelf life of less than three to four months, and you're gonna pay for, a lot of money for it. And I don't think it's gonna be a realistic expect, it's not gonna set a realistic expectation of what we should get for, um, that property. I would only remind the council that we, well, one term before I got elected, we went out and got appraisals on both schools, um, one was eight hundred thousand, I think, and one was somewhere close near it.
He's, he's right.
I'm sorry? One million, that's what I thought it was, a million and eight hundred thousand, and, that gives you an indication of where, where some of those, and I can speak badly about professional real estate appraisals, because I am one. The other thing I would say is, I have absolutely no interest in selling the property, I would not support any proposal to sell the property, and it's got nothing to do with, um, the fact that it's a needle building, it's got to do with the fact that Lydia B. Essex, um, had a wish and a desire to do something, and I think it's terribly insulting when we either ignore or marginalize the wishes of, um, people who have given, um, great sums of money and, and property for a particular purpose with the intention that it be used for that purpose. And while we're not going to be technically using it as a public library, I think the alternate use of an archive is, is respectful and also honors the wishes of, um, the benefactor. I'm particularly sensitive to, um, when we can honoring the wishes of people who have, quest things to us.
Would you like to make that as a motion, Brett? No? Okay.
I'm just telling you what my opinion is. I, I would very, I'm, I support keeping it, and it can be called the Lydia B. Essex whatever, but I think to sell this building, and if, God forbid it was torn down, I mean, that's just, if I ever gave something to someone as my dying wish, um, I would hate to think that it would be torn down, or disregarded, or thrown away.
If you look at the fire station, Stone Bridge, I mean, that was donated by the volunteers to the town, and it became a residence, so, I mean, I wouldn't see anybody tearing that beautiful building down, if anything, I would see somebody putting the money into it and making it even more beautiful, and, and also be a home.
I don't disagree, but I don't think that's what Lydia Essex wanted.
Bear in mind, there are a lot of people who are still alive who contemplate being benefactors to the town, and will see how you treat Mrs. Essex's wishes as an indication of whether you respect theirs and whether their gift should be made or not.
And, and it may sound illogical that you want to argue that you do something like this, even though there's a greater, potentially a greater public good out there for, um, the exam, I mean, Jay's a Philadelphia guy, the Barnes Gallery is the perfect example of what not to do, even though it, it benefits a great number of people, but it really destroyed a great number of people, but it really destroyed the wishes of a great individual who had a private collection.
Just so it's clear on the record, I prefer keeping the building, keeping it as an archive, but I think Joe is entitled to have us consider his in his preference. And the only way I can... The only way I can see doing that is to have some rough idea as to what the value of the property is. And as I said, if they come back twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars, that's an easy one for me. Keep it.
I see that building ten years from now looking pathetic and terrible because that's the way we seem to treat buildings in this town. That we are just looking at... I go back to Judson Street. I mean, I don't want to see another Judson Street where... And we certainly don't have the money to put a roof on that building.
The only suggestion I would make is if the council is amenable instead of spending three or four thousand dollars on an appraisal for that property, get a commercial broker's opinion of value or a broker's price opinion, which will cost you a heck of a lot less and will just be just as inaccurate.
Okay. Then we'll do that. All right. Andy Workshop for all boards and commissions, you just want to end today.
Right. Just want to remind people, February... March 2nd.
At seven.
Which is a week from tonight at seven o'clock here at Town Hall. Workshop. Talk about ethics, commission rules, open meetings, public records and the like, and I will be taking questions as well on those issues. It won't just be a lecture. I think it'll be more of a discussion and question and answer session.
Madam President.
Councilman Perry, did you want to make an announcement?
Yeah. Five more minutes and it's going to hurt us. It's going to put us past twelve anyway. I know I spoke about phone lines and communication in this building and I know Dave Roberts has left already, but the person who would want to do this with him is still here and that's Randy Costa. I'm going to put you on the spot.
He was sleeping.
I'm going to put you on the spot for a little while. Just explain to us what we talked about the other day on...
So, I was here a few meetings ago and I heard the town administrator make comments about how this building was so disconnected even between departments here. I'm just willing to offer my services. I'm Director of Network Operations at Collet Vacations in Pawtucket. I do a lot of this for a living as well as telecommunications and analysis and everything that goes along with that. So, I mean, my services are up for grabs if anyone needs it and I'm willing to do any work in that regard.
Couldn't we have...
Thank you.
For any time I have.
Could you meet with Randy and then...
Well, to kick the ball off, we had talked about getting him the phone bills.
Oh, sure.
So, he can analyze the phone bills and preferably that they have, you know, the buildings that they're serving. Assuming that like the electric bill is a whole bunch of different bills.
It's... One of the only good things Cox does is bills us very accurately. Yeah. The accounts are right down to the number and it's identified which department pays it.
So, you won't have a problem providing him with that information once he comes in?
No, because I already pulled the wall to look at it myself.
I believe it's available Thursday.
So, I'll contact you directly.
You'll have to...
It's available on Thursday.
Yeah, Nancy already has dibs on me for Thursday, so I'll have to stop in as well if you're available.
Oh, my God. All right.
Okay.
But, I'll stop by if you're available Thursday at some point and if you have time, we can have a chat.
That's perfect. I was going to buy magic, Jack, but radio shack's gone.
No, please don't. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Town clerk items and announcements.
I just want, as a reminder, to let you know that there is the budget workshop on Saturday. Monday, of course, is the workshop with open meetings. You've just said tonight, that Tuesday night, you want another budget workshop and to this point I have...
Special meetings that we can vote.
Right, they'll be special, all special meetings. And it does look like the interviews for legal service may be able to be done on that Saturday, the 14th and the Monday, the 16th. So, I don't think we're really going to need that 18th and 24th that you held. I'm just waiting for the last two to confirm the time.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lambert, bring us into executive.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? The item three, litigation site ready LAL, that's something, given the late hour, that we postpone that to the next meeting.
Has there been any progress on that?
Well, we can't talk about it here.
Well, I mean, I don't want to postpone it if there's been some discussion or something sent. I didn't even see anything.
All right, we'll just do it and then we can decide. Just go.
Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4246585, Ray Acquisition of Real Property, we are going to closed executive session.
Second.
First, remain second. All those in favor?
Continuing closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4246585, disposition of real property, Ray Industrial Park Proposal.
Second.
First, remain second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 42465A2, Ray Litigation Site Ready, LAL Construction Inc. and All.
Second.
First, remain second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 42465A2, Ray Collective Bargaining, IAFF and IBPO.
Second.
All those in favor? We're now in executive session.